Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for September 2nd, 2010. I'd like to call on our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Forsley?
Here.
Trustee Klebina?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Semenek?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Wise?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Connelly?
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker?
Here.
IT Supervisor Liljberg?
Here.
Village Planner Malik?
Here.
Fire Prevention Bureau Director Daniels?
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item before us this evening are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held August 12th and board meeting held August 16th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported on them on the committee at the whole minutes?
It should have been placed on the August 16th agenda for consideration. Also be corrected by Tuesday.
There was also-
It was as 17th instead of the 16th. Okay?
There was also one correction needed in the attendance, which we'll make for Tuesday as well. Any other corrections?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, open forum. To my knowledge, we have no open forum requests before us this evening. Reports, the mayor, I would just like to mention a few things. Manager Ron Searle and I serve in different capacities on the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference Board. We were at a meeting this morning and we received a copy of a letter that was written to Governor Patrick Quinn from the current president of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Organization this year, David Bremel, who is the president and mayor of the village of Warrenville. And with that being said, I would like to read the letter that is being sent to our Honorable Patrick Quinn, Governor of the state of Illinois. Dear Governor Quinn, we have learned of a proposal from your administration to divert one month's worth of motor fuel tax funds, MFT funds, from municipalities to prop up the state's unbalanced budget. On behalf of the 32 municipal members of the conference, we strongly urge you not do not pursue this proposal. Municipalities use the MFT funds for operations, maintenance, and construction of local roads within our communities. Residents and taxpayers expect the end demand, safe maintained streets. With your proposal for one month, there would be no snow plowing and ice removal, no patching and overlaying streets, no cleaning storm sewers, or mowing grass, all of the necessary tasks to maintain our local streets. The state should not resolve its unbalanced budgets on the backs of our of its municipalities and should not disrupt local budgets by removing or reducing local revenues. Municipalities have balanced their budgets despite economic difficulty. The state has not. Municipalities have made many, many difficult decisions required to live within their means. The state has not. Municipalities have cut programs, deferred projects, and laid off staff to keep within the constraints of the revenues. The state has not. Municipalities have used reserves that are already decimated and will ultimately have to be replenished. The state proposes to take 50 million from communities with an uncertain pledge to pay it back within 18 months. Municipalities have already been deprived of their local share of the income tax with payments lagging four to five months behind in payment from the state. The state isn't handling the simple process of transferring money that belongs to us, the municipalities, let alone paying its own bills. Instead of borrowing our money, the state could finally show some resolve and common sense and live within its means. We cannot support the proposed version of motor fuel tax funds. We will oppose it in every way we can. Sincerely, David Bremel, Mayor, Village of Warrenville. And the board voted unanimously to send this letter to Governor Quinn. But I thought I would mention that just to let everybody know that we in the Village of Westmont, the staff, the board, has done exactly what is stated in this letter. And we need every penny that we can receive from the state in order to continue to maintain the fine services that we feel that we do to all the residents of the village of Westmont. Thank you. And the next thing I wanted to mention is that the county of DuPage is making an attempt to communicate more with the voters, the residents of DuPage County. And they have scheduled three different public hearings on the budget and the capital plan for the county. The first of those meetings is going to occur right here in this chamber on Wednesday, September 22nd, from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. And they will also be held on Thursday, the 23rd of September in Addison and Tuesday, the 28th, in the city of West Chicago.
7:00 to 9:00.
But I feel this is something that our residents should know and if you have any questions, comments, and remarks that you would like to make regarding the budget for the county of DuPage, this would be an opportunity for you to attend this meeting and perhaps make your comments known. Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that I would like to request an executive session after this meeting regarding personnel. Thank you. Next, our village clerk, Janie Simski.
I just want to remind all our residents that school has started, so be careful when you're driving through the neighborhoods and the school crossings and the school bus stops because the kids are all out. I walk every morning, I see them getting on and off buses, so just be careful and have a wonderful last spring over the weekend for Labor Day. Everybody get out and enjoy the weekend. It's the end of summer, unfortunately, Sue.
I know.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Semenek.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Our village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. I just wanted to call attention to the board distributed list of supplemental purchase orders. We have one additional one that's actually a simultaneous appearance on the finance ordinance as well as on our agenda. It's to Will's Burke Kelsey and Associates on the amount of $8,930.40. This has to do with the work that we're going to be doing down on St. Joe Creek. So that will be on the agenda for Tuesday as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustees, starting with trustee Fleming this evening.
The only thing that I have this evening is I would like to add on to the executive session, potential land sale. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. On Tuesday, we will have a building and zoning committee meeting at 6 o'clock here in Village Hall prior to our regular board meeting. Also, I was hoping that our chief or someone might want to comment on, I'm not sure that we got to think about the calendar. I don't think we have another Thursday meeting prior to the 9/11 ceremony. So it might be a good time to remind everyone that that will be coming up a week from Saturday.
Good evening. Yes, I'd like to invite the entire village board, along with all of our residents and our neighboring communities. We'll have the yearly Patriot Day ceremonies at 500 North Cass, which is our police and fire building. It's located at Travi and Cass Avenue, one block south of Waltham Avenue. The ceremony starts at 9:00 a.m. and it lasts approximately 45 minutes. And we appreciate the support over the years that the village has endeavored to do this. So we'd like to thank you and hope you all can make it.
Thank you. And then the last thing I had, I just wanted to congratulate King Carwash here in Westmont. They were recently honored by the Celebration Media U.S. Corporation for their customer service. They were awarded a four-star award for excellence in customer service through their online guest reviews and satisfaction surveys. So if you've ever had your car washed though, they do a great job. So I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Just one thing, I want to thank the police department and Public Works. I emailed them about the traffic. Just, yeah. See, trustee Klebina laughing because crossing the tracks from this end of town and going to work and with the school open and with Fairview closed and Belmont down to one lane and we can go on and on, as we all know. I know there's not a lot we can do, but we are aware of it, we are trying, and the police department's working hard to keep the traffic flowing. Appreciate the signs out there and just kind of get through it until all this, you know, construction is done. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Emery.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Scott.
Thank you, sir. Just to announce, we're going to have a code enforcement committee meeting on Thursday, September 9th at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Klebina.
Just want to make sure everybody realizes again that our next meeting is not Monday, it's Tuesday, which Sue alleged too about her committee meeting, and wishing everybody a happy and safe Labor Day. And when, Mark, when you brought that up, are the kids getting to school okay? That's why I was starting to laugh. I'm thinking, are the kids coming in later? These buses getting over and getting them to school?
Not the first day. But they've been getting there since-
So I didn't know if they're picking them up earlier just because of the-
I think so.
Okay. So hopefully things will calm down in another couple of months and then the kids can be back to normal schedule.
Yeah.
Oh, it's unbelievable. That's, I appreciate that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, intergovernmental agreement. Board to consider approving an intergovernmental agreement for the purposes of consolidating our emergency dispatch center with the village of Downers Grove.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight I come before you with an intergovernmental agreement for consolidation with the village of Downers Grove for our emergency communications centers. This is a project that has been underway for, as you know, several many years, and so I've prepared an overview and will be here to answer any questions that you may have. In 2008, the village board directed our staff, both police, fire, and all village staff, to consolidate our emergency dispatch operation or center with another local governmental agency. The team assigned to this task included personnel from finance, fire, police, IT, as well as the village manager. Our consolidation will reduce costs and meet the goals of the ETSB, which is the Emergency Telephone Safety Board, in reducing the number of PSAP, which is public safety answering points. That's basically a 911 center in DuPage County. There was an effort underway countywide to reduce the number of these PSAP centers. Reason being is that would also save the ETSB funding as well, as well as be able to provide professional services to the residents of DuPage. Some of the options, as you know, we considered in the past, and we've been doing this again since 2008, was we considered moving with the, consolidating with the village of Downers Grove, Oakbrook, Woodridge, Southwest Central Dispatch, DUCOM, a group of South DuPage agencies, which we're going to consolidate and create a local dispatch. And for the fire department, they looked at Tri-State. We also looked at NORCOM, which is a private company entity that does dispatching services, as well as a couple of other communities, and before we came to our final decision. In March 2010, we approached the village of Downers Grove to see if they would be interested in consolidating their dispatch service with us, and they were. We considered it to be a viable option for consolidating both our police and fire into one facility. One of our goals was to move both police and fire into one facility rather than separate the two out. Since March of 2008, we have been working very closely with the, our counterparts in the village of Downers Grove, and I must say, it's been an outstanding effort to be able to come to you tonight with our recommendation. The service and the cooperation and the professionals that we have received from our counterparts in Downers Grove has been impressive. We feel that this is the move that will best serve not only Downers Grove's residents, but our residents as well. When we consolidate, we're going to consolidate at the Downers Grove Police Department, which is located at 825 Burlington Avenue in Downers Grove. We believe that within six months from the time the board approves the final IGA, intergovernmental agreement, we would be able to move our operations from our current location, from the Westmont Police Department, to consolidate the center, which is called the Village Operations Center at Downers Grove. This is an estimate. It's our best estimate, and it's from our professionals that we spoke into. We believe this is something that can be done. Tonight, we're asking the board to consider this. We're asking you to vote on this next Tuesday, and then Downers Grove will be bringing the same issue to government of government agreement in front of their board on September 14th. Once both boards, if we receive the approval from both boards, we're going to begin work immediately on the consolidation process. At this time, I'd like to call up Spencer Parker, our village budget analyst, to go over any financial information and answer any financial questions that you may have.
All right, I'll just go over this briefly. Because we've all seen the charts and we've gone over the financial figures many times, but just to summarize, right now, we're looking at the anticipated annual savings of this consolidation would be about 200, almost $216,000 that we would save each year. This includes staffing, the public safety billing of 500 North Cass, as has been discussed by the board, and it's the preferred staffing option of the village board. We also have an additional $191,000 in transition costs, which will be in the beginning of this, will be in this fiscal year. A lot of these costs should be reimbursed by the ETSB. We're not sure how many, but even if we have the full amount of the $191,000, that's still less than the annual savings, which we would see. I guess if you have any additional questions on finances, you can answer them right now. I know we've gone over this many times, so.
Right. Very much.
And to expound on Spencer's comment, we have sent a letter to the ETSB. We're asking them to put this on their agenda. I believe their next meeting is coming up on September 9th. We have petitioned them. We have notified them. Both the village of Downers Grove and ourselves have notified the ETSB that we're doing this consolidation and that we would be seeking funds. Last week, both managers authored and sent a letter off to the chairman of the ETSB requesting this $191,000. We're waiting now. We're working with their staff. Again, we feel that they will pick up some. We don't believe they'll pick up all of the cost, but we know they'll pick up some. And once we get that final figure, we'll be able to bring that to you. We're asking also that the board give us permission to fund our transition process now, rather than waiting for the ETSB funds, which would delay our six-month time period. We're asking the board to authorize us to begin expending funds so that we can begin this consolidation and complete it within six months. Our goal is to try to get this done. Our goal originally was to get it done this fiscal year, and we're trying to make, say, as close to that goal as we possibly can. One option also that the Westmont Fire Department is reviewing is the option of migrating their current radio frequency to the Downers Grove radio frequency for fire. They would share the frequency with Downers Grove. Currently, they change, they share the frequency with Claritin Hills, not, let Chief Trout explain, but with other frequencies or other local communities as well. However, if they were to do that move, there's a change in equipment, repeaters, or other technical aspects to it. We estimate that cost, should they decide to do that in the future, would be approximately $60,000. And if that were to occur again, we would petition the ETSB to see if any kind of funding they can assist us, should the fire department choose to make that move. That would be a good operational move for both, rather than the Downers Grove dispatchers having to listen to two fire frequencies, listening to both Downers Grove and Westmont. They would be on the same frequencies, and we feel might be a little bit better, but that's something the fire department's going to review and make a recommendation in the future. The new village operations center will be staffed by a minimum of three dispatchers at all times. That will be Downers Grove employees. The benefits of moving to the VOC, the Village Operations Center, is they will have a dedicated fire dispatch. This is something that's been very important to the fire department, something that will improve their services. Right now, we are two dispatchers. They're trained in fire. What we're anticipating is that with this move, we'll have one dispatcher that'll do just monitoring fire. The priority of that dispatcher is to monitor fire, fire calls, and assist on police calls when necessary, and vice versa. There'll be no retraining on police and our current software systems. Currently, we both use what's called the computer aided dispatch CAD and our records management, that RMS systems. It's called, a vendor called SunGuard HTE. Downers Grove also has the same vendor, so our transition, our officers will notice no difference. There'll be no change in their report writing. There'll be no change in their computer screens. We felt that was a very big plus for us, as well as we're very satisfied with HTE, SunGuard, and we actually prefer their services over others. A potential hiring of our current Westmont dispatchers. In the intergovernmental agreement, you'll see that Downers Grove has agreed to hire three of our current dispatchers. What they mean by that is that they will, rather than opening the, their employment process to just the general public, they will open their employment process to our dispatchers only first. They'll give our dispatchers the first shot at being, filling those three spots. There's a possibility there may be more, but that's still, that's a possibility, that's not a certainty. But right now, they do know that they need to hire three. So they would, our dispatchers would be invited and welcomed and encouraged to apply to Downers Grove because we feel that's a very good, positive thing, or win-win for both of us. Our dispatchers can go there and take their experience here from Westmont to Downers, and they can help the transition and be able to teach Westmont, Downers Grove dispatchers about Westmont and vice versa. The Downers dispatchers can also teach our dispatchers. They would have, however, all the employees would be Downers Grove employees. They would no longer be a Westmont employee. We also have, one thing is important to us, was the input on governance issues. If we were to go to a larger dispatch center, we lose a lot of input, whereas if we had a problem with the way or concern the way some things are done, either a call is dispatched or a way a call is processed. Larger centers don't give you the personal one-on-one or you don't get the input. You have to go to a committee and the committee votes on whether they're going to accept your input. The nice thing about this is our, our staff working so well and the assurance, as you see in the IGA, Downers Grove is going to work with us. And the nice thing will be is that we can call and have our concerns and issues addressed immediately and not have to go to a committee. We feel that's a very big positive. We also feel too that the level of service that our residents currently receive should be remained unchanged because you're going to have the local community familiarity from the dispatchers. They're going to know when you call that I'm at Cass and Ogden. They're going to know what that intersection is. And some larger centers, you eventually get that, but maybe not at first. We feel that the dispatchers being local and within the community will know our, both of our communities, and it's a win-win for both. Also, an efficiency and higher staffing levels. Again, right now, currently, we have two dispatchers. Sometimes at nights, we drop down to one. The staffing will be three dispatchers handling police and fire calls for both Downers Grove and Westmont, and we feel that's enough, so that's increased staffing over what we currently have. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow chief, Chief Robert Porter, from the Downers Grove Police Department, who'd like to address the board, and then we'll both be able, along with our staff that is here, answer any questions that the boards may have.
Thanks, Tom. Well, I have to start with this. I grew up in this community, and it's great to be back. I get to see my old basketball coach here today, and it's awesome. So, great place to grow up, a lot of very fond memories. This is a great community. Really, all I want to talk about is really how this process kind of played out. This started out as kind of a conceptual discussion back in March of 2010, and you've had staffs from Village of Downers Grove, Village of Westmont, working hand-in-hand on this project. I want to introduce a number of them here today. First and foremost, they have our village manager, Dave Fieldman, fire chief Jimmy Jackson, deputy police chief Kurt Luter, records manager Jenny Rizzo, I'm sorry, VOC manager Jenny Rizzo, VOC supervisor Heather Lippi, and our records manager Tracy Adams. This group and the personnel from Westmont worked unbelievable together. You know, it's not often you get the police and fire department actually in the same room getting along. We're usually trying to battle for resources, and it's, it was kind of a nice environment. We're actually talking about sharing them and what's best for the community. So from where I sit, this is a good thing. We've had a lot of very good discussions over the course of the last several months, and I think this is going to be a positive environment for everybody. So if you have any questions of myself, of our staff, please feel free. So this is, I think it's a very positive move for us.
And I agree with this. Well, Bob and I will stay here. It's our recommendation that both boards, but especially here at the Westmont Village Board, approve the IGA. If you have any questions on the IGA, the operations, anything, that's why we, I invited Chief Porter and his staff to be here in case you wanted to have any questions. And Chief Porter's also sent an invitation that if you wish to go and view the Village Operations Center, you're more than welcome to do so. Just give me a call, we'll arrange a date and time. But all the board members are more than welcome to come and view the center if they still choose. Any questions that you may have?
I think you've kept us apprised of the situation for quite a long time and done an outstanding job, and we look forward to it.
One of the things I think the residents here may want to know is what's going to happen if they, should they show up at the police department here if they have a problem and they show up in Westmont? If you want to address that for our residents, are we?
We patterned our, closing our station, similar to what Naperville Police Department did most recently within the last year, in that there will be a telephone in the lobby, and this is done at other communities. I believe it's Darien, Claritin Hills. Hinsdale just recently did this as well. There's a phone line will be on the outer lobby that someone can pick up. It'll ring immediately in the VOC. A dispatcher will pick it up, answer it. It'll also have, the VOC, we're going to feed our video cameras in our lobby, and we're going to be placing a particular camera just for that lobby, so they will have audio and visual connection with that person. If they need someone, you need a police officer for a report, they have a question, they'll get their answer, their question answered, or if they need an officer, an officer will be dispatched. We are also planning on, in the night shift when it's closed, an officer maybe make, have made an arrest or have an station do a report. We're going to ask him to do his report in front of the lobby, so if someone comes in, there's someone there. So they still can come to the police station, they still can get their question, they'll still get the services they need. One of the things would be, what if someone's being either harassed or being threatened or being followed and there's a security issue that way? We're going to be putting two-door interlocks in place. When someone's in that inner lobby, they're not in our full front lobby, but there's a, an inner lobby, it's between two doors, we're going to put a system in where the dispatcher can actually lock that outer door and leave them locked in there. However, if the threat becomes imminent, we'll allow them access into the lobby and other plans to move them someplace else. We feel that, you know, if that were to happen, the officer's, you know, response time will be very short. So if an officer, if someone goes there, they'll still be able to go there overnight. During the daytime, we're going to be half-staffed, as we currently do now with records. So if someone needs a report made, needs to have an officer as a questioner, wants to get a copy of a report, they can do so by just going to the police department, as they currently do now.
And 911 obviously is there, but how about the non-emergency number?
Non-emergency phone calls. Downers Grove has agreed to answer our non-emergency calls when our center is called or our station is closed. So during the daytime, our personnel will handle our own administrative calls. We're going to put a call attendant in place where, so someone would call, it'd be prompts if you need to talk to someone, you can enter their extension, or if you need to talk to a live person, they can do so, especially after hours. And that will go to the Downers Grove VOC, and they'll can get their answer, their question answered. We also are going to have a series of answering machines, so if you have a question on a parking ticket, you can hit that prompt and there'd be a pre-recorded message giving them direction on what to do. Our goal is to try to limit the number of non-emergency administrative calls that Downers Grove will answer. One thing we also do, overnight, people calling for overnight parking permission. There'll be a recording where they can punch that, leave their information. Downers Grove will be able to access that information and pass it along to our officers, or our officers may be able to access it themselves at 2:00.
Chief, what are the hours going to be?
Currently, right now, from 7:00 a.m. till midnight, seven days a week. That's what the, the direction we received is that our station will be manned from 7:00 a.m. till midnight, seven days a week. That could be changed at the board's discretion. As I mentioned at a board, in speaking with deputy chief from Naperville, they recently closed their station. They have had no concerns from any residents. They've received zero number of calls from their residents as to why their station was closed or someone going there and finding the station closed, because you still will get your service. There may not be a person there, but you're still going to get your public service that you need. Same thing with Chief Bloom from Hinsdale. Again, Hinsdale just recently closed their station and has had no complaints from the residents nor any comments. Again, you're still going to have the phone, you're still going to have the contact, and Again, you're still going to have the phone, you're still going to have the contact and they're still going to have the availability of having a Westmont officer respond to their needs.
And the only time that's going to be closed is from midnight till 7:00 AM?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I forget, do we have a Safe Haven decal on the front of the station?
Yes, we do.
They have, because so many police departments now with budgets cuts are closing at night, Safe Haven has a new decal that says during business hours when the, or it says something to the effect of, you know, when there are personnel in the department.
We will look into getting that. If not, we'll look with the Public Works and have it add, edit our sign because our Public Works installed it. One benefit also too is that the fire station is manned 24 hours a day as well. Maybe there might be some way that we may be able to work something with that, that they could come out and take that.
And since we have the, we have the hotline, we may want to consider just leaving, you know, if we can take Safe Haven and somebody just picks up the phone, hangs up and runs out, whatever, it's still Safe Haven for our baby.
I can work with Chief Porter and we can put maybe some type of process in place, but they get a hang-up call, that the videotape, the video will still be there, if not, we can have an officer respond.
Okay.
Oh, there's my counterpart.
All I'd like to say, it's been a real joy working with Tom. Don't really.
His name is Bob.
I came, I came. He's done a fantastic job of working through this process for the last year and a half or so. It seems longer, but he's done an outstanding job, very competent individual, and I just wanted to pass that along to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell you later. Want to get a picture of that? Any, any questions, either Chief Porter, Chief Trout or myself or any of our staffs? Again, I thank Chief Trout for his comments, but it's not I that did this alone. I had the benefit of having an outstanding staff to work with. I learned more about radios and consoles and things in the past couple of years and the past couple of months than I'd known before. Everyone's staff has been invaluable to me, from IT to finance to my staff. Deputy Chief King was retired, was saw this and Deputy Chief Gunther has taken up the, his torch, as well as Deputy Chief Conley, Deputy Chief Weiss and his staff. It's, we've worked very, very well together and I think it's, it's a tribute to us to say that since March of this year, we've gotten this far. We're, and we've done something with, we've done things with other communities that took us a lot longer. And it's, it adds a tribute to both of our staffs in the way that we worked with Downers Grove and our staff on both sides.
Any other comments from board members?
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to thank Chief Porter for coordinating and bringing all of your staff over here. We appreciate them giving up their evening to come over and, and risk the possibility of being questioned by anyone.
We're used to it. Our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'm 15 South Cass. Board to consider request for Mr. Said Ahmed for the development of a restaurant.
Good evening. My name is Said Ahmed and I am the one who requested the license for the 15th South for opening a fast food under J&amp;J Fish and Chicken.
Do we have anyone from the staff here that could give us a further explanation of this request before us this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. Staff was contacted, I believe, by the property owner of the property at 15 South Cass indicating that he had a potential tenant for this property and Mr. Ahmad came into Village Hall to discuss with village staff. We outlined the procedure. Since this property is located within the confines of the downtown B1 Central Business District, all development permits must be prior approved by the Village Board for occupancy. This is a J&amp;J Fish, I believe, type restaurant dealing in fried chicken, fish, frog legs, Mr. Ahmad?
Correct.
And we are here this evening.
What's the, what's the status of the fire alarms in that building?
Since the last two restaurants that we've had in there, everything was brought up to code specifically for that restaurant.
Super.
Could you, Mr. Said, could you give us an explanation of the, of your prior experience in the restaurant business and exactly what type of an operation you wish to run at that location? If you're going to be a restaurant, we'd like to have you explain so everyone can get an idea of what your restaurant's going to be all about.
Sure, by all me. I have been in the fast food business for the last 20 years. I originally started from 3151 North Broadway, 1983. That was the Maxwell Street Express and since then, I've been in the fast food business. Used to own a couple Dunkin' Donuts, JX Pizza now from the last 10 years. I'm with the J&amp;J Fish and Chicken. J&amp;J Fish and Chicken originally from Chicago. Their headquarters on Pershing, Midway distributor on that. And we do have a certain recipes we use according to the J&amp;J Fish and Chicken. All the fish is fresh, we batter in front of you, we deep fry in front of you, and nothing is precooked till the order comes in. And I have a location right now in Joliet, Illinois for the last 10 years. I'm running out of lease in there for two years, so this is a good spot for me.
Was that your restaurant at 63rd and Woodward?
Yes, we used to part of that too.
What would the hours be of operation?
Hour will be 11 to 10 in the weekdays, maybe on the Fridays, Saturdays, I'd go to midnight.
Could I ask what happened to the one at Downers Grove?
I have no idea. When I opened one of the other, my partner, he bought it himself and he was running it. And after that, I don't know, sir, what happened.
Do you have a menu?
Sure, we do have.
Can we see it?
Sure, by all me.
Thank you.
So who owns the name? Is it a franchise? Are you killing the table here? We'll show it up on the screen. Okay.
Yes, we do. On that location, we do have burgers. Usually we don't, but that custom location, we have, we serve also burgers there too.
So you'll have burgers here as well?
Not really, only salads, salads and soups.
Salad, soup.
Soup and a couple of sandwiches. And this is the rest.
Is this a franchise?
It is a franchise.
So it's a franchise that you purchased?
So this isn't the menu of what will be here?
Just a little less, I would say, side orders going to be there, fish dinner is going to be there, chicken dinner, the sandwiches only few will not be there. Fish by the pieces will be there, lunch special's going to be there, and chicken wing, of course, going to be there.
Is this going to be strictly carryout or are you going to have some tables in there? What do you want to do?
Strictly carryout, but we do have a few tables about, while they're waiting, they can, you know, sit there. About eight people sitting we'll have.
But that'll mainly be a waiting area?
Yes.
You don't expect them to dine there?
No, but they, they want to eat there, they can eat there too.
If I remember, there's an ice cream window there. Is that something you're going to be using or not?
Not, at least this year, maybe next summers.
So everything I, I'm just, so I'm correct on this, everything is pretty much fried food?
Fried food, yes.
On the request, it says the sidewalk window is requested to be retained to allow for service of food and soft-serve ice cream. You're going to have the ice cream?
In the future, because it's already over summertime. I don't want to start the ice cream right now, maybe next year.
What do you, what do you think your timeline is to get in and get started?
As soon I get a permission from you, maybe another 30 days, get the health departments going and get a permission from them.
Have you been in contact with the county health department?
Yes, I have, sir. Yes, I'll get a permission from you first, then come to us.
Okay. Is the equipment that you need pretty much?
They're all going to be brand-new almost and they're all NSF. I have a health department certificate from the state of Illinois. Okay, we can, you know, open the business.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, just the question I always ask every new business owner. Would you be considering perhaps joining our chamber and becoming active in our business community?
Sure, I am.
Great. Happy to hear that.
Thank you.
What do you anticipate again, your hours? Are you going to be open for lunch, just dinner? What are you?
I'm going to open 11 o'clock to 10 o'clock every day.
11 to 10, seven days a week?
Seven days a week. Saturday maybe 9 o'clock would closer.
Getting hungry.
Is there anyone in the, in the public that might be here to comment on this request before us?
Good evening, fellow trustees. My name is Violet Hawkins and I operate the Edward Jones office that is located at 8 West Burlington. I am also a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce, serve on the Board of Directors and serve as co-chair for the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance. Let me also just state that it is, as a, the Chair of the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance, it is our priority and goal to make sure that we get the right types of businesses into our downtown community and we are, we've gone to even the lengths of making sure we have a promotional marketing piece to solicit businesses that we feel would be a good fit for our community. On a personal note, let me also say that I grew up on the south side of Chicago and I'm very familiar with this establishment of J&amp;J Fish. And I'm here this evening to express my reservations about opening this type of business in our downtown community. If you don't mind, can I remove this? Thank you. I took the liberty, as Mr. Ahmed did say, most of the restaurants that J&amp;J Fish has opened are primarily in the Chicagoland region. I believe they operate at least 50, about 57 branches with a few of them in the suburbs that are surrounding. I took the liberty of printing up the, let's see, I hope this is going to show. I took the liberty of printing the Yellow Page map that shows where those restaurants are located and because I know it's blurry, they are primarily on the south and the west side of Chicago, Illinois. Now, this again does not necessarily spell anything drastic, but what I also thought was interesting is I went to the Chicago Police Department website and they have an application called ClearMap. I went through this and this is what's on the page that follows. And you can separate this out to show those areas that are in red are ones that have crier, excuse me, higher incidence of crime in terms of those areas. And so I find it very intriguing that they seem to follow the pattern of where lots of these restaurants are located. Now, this clearly goes into this chicken and the egg thing because I'm not saying that you open a J&amp;J Fish and there in turn you're going to get crime, nor am I saying that just because there's crime, you have to have a J&amp;J Fish. But it certainly does bring up some reservations as a business owner in this community. I also took the same map and on that same Chicago Police Department website, you can break it down according to neighborhood. So I took the liberty of breaking down, there's a crime summary report which I printed off just today with crimes that have transpired in that community within the last 90 days. The ones that you see highlighted are areas and the count next to it are areas where there are J&amp;J Fishes that are located. So, that again does bring up some reservations, especially considering that a lot of them are in the top, the top crime areas of Chicago. Again, am I saying that just because you open up a J&amp;J Fish, we're going to be drawing in crime? No. But I'm definitely saying that it is something that I think that the board should give heavy consideration to in that, yes, we want to drive revenue into the community and as a Chair of the Downtown Westmont Business Alliance, trust me, no one is any more concerned, no less concerned than I am to make sure that we get businesses occupying these spots. But I also want to make sure that over a long term, we're bringing in the right kind of businesses, ones that are not going to impact the businesses that are already here and the businesses that have been established in this community over the last, some of them 30-plus years. Now, I thought the other thing that was very interesting is the demographics, especially within the, the few restaurants that are located in the suburbs, those J&amp;Js that are located in the suburbs, specifically Bellwood, Bowling Brook and Forest Park. Now, this is from a website called citidata.com, but as you can see, it's broken down into racial demographics. And as you look, this is what is going to be shown for Forest Park. And I do have one for Westmont also. This is Bowling Brook. This is Bellwood. And this is us here in Westmont. So my question, I guess my, part of my reservation comes in that this is not the traditional area that these restaurants are established in. This is not the community that these restaurants typically service, even within the suburbs. So again, on the point of bringing up a few of my reservations, who are we going, who's going to be supporting this, these businesses? And if this is not the demographic that makes it up normally, are we going to be drawing in people from other communities? And again, that's part of our goal, but are we going to be drawing in the right types of people? And I think that on the last point, we've worked very, very hard to establish ourself, I believe, and come away from the, the years of being considered whiskey hill and, you know, overcoming some of those negative stereotypes that a lot of our surrounding suburbs have about our community. We worked very, very hard to get past that. And I know that there's still some people, as I meet them in my business, that still think that Westmont is what it was 40 years ago. I know it to be something different. That's why I put my business here. But I think about the likes of our family restaurants that are already there, that have ample seating so that you can bring your children, that operate in normal business hours so that it's a family-friendly place, maybe like your Brickyard and your Tap House. I also think about the restaurants that we're fortunate to have that draw in people from surrounding more affluent communities, perhaps such as Amber and Vincitore, where people are coming in and spending maybe $40 and $50 for a meal and we're very fortunate to have that. So my concern is that by putting a fast food place into downtown that does not go with either the family-friendly setting that we have already established, nor this fine dining that we've already established, are we doing a disservice to the restaurants that are already here? Is this in turn going to impact their businesses? And then like I said, is this even going to in turn perhaps create more of a problem with our police or our crime if this does draw in something else? So again, these are not things that I'm saying are guarantees, but growing up and being very familiar with these types of businesses and seeing them in a community when I was growing up, I would definitely say that I think the board should have strong reservations about allowing this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Community members? Members of the Chamber?
Members of the Chamber.
Director of the Chamber?
Larry Forsberg, Executive Director of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Violet Hawkins is indeed a member of our Board of Directors and in its deed a Vice Chair of our Downtown Westmont Business Alliance. Matter of fact, she shared some of these concerns that she shared with the Village Board this evening at a DWBA meeting today. I just want to clarify that it's not a chamber position, her opinion that she's expressed tonight, and that she does have some reservations indeed, but we want to make it clear that this is a personal recommendation that Violet's making of her own feeling and belief. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just to confirm, this is a permitted use in the B1, is it not?
Correct. It's a permitted use that requires a development permit. As the board seeks to redevelop its downtown, you take into account things like aesthetics, type of use, build-out, safety, all those things to determine whether it will enhance the existing downtown and promote the redevelopment. I think the potential tie to crime, given what was presented, is a little tenuous and I'd worry about linking those two up when making this request. I think you need to focus on what's the business, what is it going to look like? You may want to see pictures. What's the menu? You got that? Do you want fast food in the downtown? Is this a family-oriented business, which I know the Economic Development Director has stated on many occasions and the Liquor Commissioner has, with liquor establishments, that's somewhat a priority. Will it enhance the downtown? I think that's what you need to look at, not what type of customers is it going to draw or is it going to result in crime unless you have statistics to really prove that.
Is there a menu you have present for the business that you're going to be hoping to bring to town? Can I see it?
I like the menu.
The location you've got in Joliet, is that the one in Larkin?
Right, 213 South Larkin, but this is from my old place. Oh, sorry. From the Bowling Brook place. I respect what the lady said about the crime and everything. Thing is this, the same speech I had about 10 years ago in Joliet, and thanks to God, in 10 years, none of, none of the accident have happened. Not even once we have to call the police. Same thing 20 years ago when I opened in Bowling Brook. I had the same speech from some people just like that and thanks God, we never had any problem. You can call major, anybody from that office. You can call major, anybody from that office.
I'm a little disappointed that there's not any sit-down, really, for more of a family atmosphere. It's more of, it is a fast food. I happen to have a menu from your location in Larkin, because I went down there on Tuesday for lunch. There really isn't anything for children on here, or as of a children's menu, okay? At this point. So I had lunch there, and I, to be honest with you, I was very disappointed in the quality of the food I had. I was really looking forward to having a shrimp dinner, or lunch down there, and I got through the first piece, and I threw the rest away. Uncooked.
Sorry to hear that.
The breading on it was falling off. It was oil-soaked. The fries, it was, you could wring them out. It was a very disappointing, and honestly, I was looking forward to it. That's why I made the trip down there.
Okay.
But, so that's the issue I have with that. The first impressions weren't good. But number two is the family atmosphere, and I'm just not quite sure that this presents a family atmosphere.
I think that, first of all, the aesthetics that we're looking for, as you drive both north, north and south on Cass, that, around that area of the tracks, we have spent a lot of money on our facade improvements. The business owners have spent a lot of money on extremely tasteful signage. So what I'm not interested in seeing is the J&amp;J Fish, some big illuminated sign hanging out that faces north-south, just something tasteful on the building is, you know, I understand you have to go with your logo and all of that. You might point us to Taco Express and say, but they're, you know, they're not high-end and all that. They are very family-oriented. They have sit-down in there. I am familiar with the restaurant that you used to own and sold out to your partner that was on Woodward, because my mother had an ice cream addiction and used to make me take her to Ashby's all the time. And I tried J&amp;J once. I am not going to profess that I have the same taste as other people, but my experience was similar to Trustee Scott's. But to each his own. As far as the clientele that were there, I understand the concerns, and we really have no control over it at this juncture. But that one, it was a hangout for a lot of young unemployed apartment dwellers in the Woodridge area. We're not going to tolerate that here. We're not going to prejudge it, but if they think that this is going to be the new hangout on Cass, complete with all of the garbage from the takeout, and the things that went on down at 63rd and Woodwood, Woodridge, which required the Downers Grove Police Department to play frequent visits, we're not going down that road, and I can tell you that right now. I believe that anybody that wants to come to this town and start a business should be able to do that. But the only reason that I'm telling you ahead of time is if it's anything like what went on at 63rd and Woodward, you would be back in front of the Board at our request.
I'm sure. Mr. Bob, bad experience he had that Tuesday, I'm sorry about that. I don't know, but, you know, just the business, I don't know who was the cook that day, and I was, I wasn't there. But usually, if you go to businesses I have, like Bowling Brook, to, the address is Bowton, we never had any problem, it never was a hangout. As long I am there or my wife's there, there's not going to be any hangout. And we are professional business people. I also own Golden Corral in Algonquin, you know? So I know the sit-down and carry-out, and this, this is how I made it Golden Corral from these small businesses. But I'm not here to promote some kind of a crime or anything. You know, if J&amp;J Fish is not that, you know, somebody else is going to take that place, and I'm sure they're going to have the same, you know, they may not have, J&amp;J Fish, there be Mings and more, or anything can be happen, and they still be south side of Chicago, you know? What's the guarantee of, they're going to bring that kind of clientele or not? I have tried in, I have a, I used to have a store in Elgin. You can go there, call Elgin Tower. We never had any problem. I have a touch of Chicago in Elgin, never had a problem. Ten years' business I had. One time I had more than five businesses, thanks God, they all run well, never had to call the police. And I run as a businessman, neat and clean, professional business. That's what made me where I am right now.
I would only ask the Board to consider one thing in looking at this request. Take a look at what you presently have in this particular district, and look at what the kind of establishment this is in comparison to the other eating establishments that we have in the B1 district. I would ask that you consider that.
What do you anticipate your annual sales to be?
We approximately do about, about fifteen thousand dollars a week, you know, about three and some thousand, you know? Some J&amp;J Fish, we just opened in Indianapolis, one of my friends, they're going to do about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And every new place as we go, we do go through, the lady have said, and thanks God, in my business, I never had any problem. Even when I was in Chicago, 39 and King Drive, I'm, I'm from there. If she knows about it, I never even had a problem there. I was there for a few years. 63rd and Hosted, I was there, under the L. Englewood Shopping Center, if she knows that area. I was in Roseland, 15th and Michigan. You can see my record anywhere in Chicago, never had to call the police, thanks God.
Mr. Ahmad, which, which businesses, especially restaurants, do you think are compatible with downtown?
Here?
Yeah.
I don't think so. This is going to be entirely new, something different this investment going to have.
How long has your Bowling Brook location been open? How long have you been?
Bowling Brook, I opened, I think ninety-nine, we opened 184 South Bowling Brook Drive by the Walmart.
This one's on Bowton, right?
This is on the Bowton. I opened 2002, this one. Same time I opened in Joliet, almost eighty years there.
Just a couple of comments. To your point, Trustee Emory, that Taco Express may be considered a fast-food type restaurant. I'm not one to judge whether it is or isn't, but that predates the establishment of the central business district as a redevelopment district under state statute. So that business was already there. The Village Board had no say whether it could be allowed or not. If you're inclined to approve this request, one thing you've done with other businesses, because you've been concerned about aesthetics, is to require any proposed plans for signage to come back before the Village Board for your approval, which cannot be unreasonably withheld. But of course, you've had other development requests where you've requested awnings, goose-neck lighting, things like that, that may be asking too much for this type of business, maybe not, but it's certainly something you can review. Same with any aesthetics of the, the build-out, the, the look. Is it going to be stark white with bright lights and uninviting, or is it going to be an inviting family restaurant? Those are legitimate concerns, so what you can do is condition the approval and ordinance with special conditions that are reasonable, not unreasonable, but reasonable ones.
We definitely, because we've required the aesthetics of both, the facade of the building in this one, what, what would be done with it because it's two sides, what would be done with the window, because that faces the street, you know? And signage, lighting, all that. We've required that of everybody else on Cass, so that you know this is nothing new. We're going to want to see it.
Sure. It's going to be the same canopy, it's just going to be name change only. That's the only signage that's coming on that building. Only the name is going to be changed, everything should stay the same.
So just the Georges? You'll replace the canopy?
I will replace the canopy. It might be the white color with the red lettering on it, or maybe the red with the white number on it. The same thing, we're not going to change anything.
So you're not going to do anything but replace the canopy?
Correct. With my name and everything, logo.
You know, I, I echo Trustee Scott's comment in that I would prefer to see inside seating. I'd prefer to see, you know, a family-type atmosphere, so more family can sit down and, you know, have some really good fried fish or shrimp and a nice peach cobbler, whatever. As far as what's on the menu, you know, I think this, I think we could use something new in the downtown. But I'm not, I'm not thrilled about the idea of fast food. I'd like to see it more as a family restaurant, family-type environment, with, you know, with an area to sit down.
Sure. We can add a few more tables if the Village and everybody approve for that, up to sixteen to twenty people, we can sit down. You can go see my Crest Hill location, about twenty people can sit down. They enjoy, it's smaller than this, even they enjoy lunch there or dinner there. Or weekend, they come even far from the Shawlwood area, and they enjoy a fresh fish.
If everything is cooked fresh to order, which is great, and it should be, how long does it take to fill an average order?
About seven.
How long am I in there if I order?
Seven to ten minutes maximum.
Okay. And how many employees would you have working?
We'll have two full-time, two part-time.
During, I'm presuming during the busiest time, and then, okay.
Yeah.
How often are you going to be there?
Every day.
You have other places, though, that you also?
No, this is the one, I almost have a contact on that Joliet. I'm going to be, hopefully be selling that one by next month. That's why I'm acquiring this place. So me and my wife will be here full-time.
Is your, apparently you've done a lot of open J&amp;J Fishes, sell them, move to the next spot. Is that your intention here? Get this one up and running, and then sell it and move to the next spot?
Not really, no. No.
Not really?
No. I, I'm not ready for that, because I just want to enjoy the Westmont, and I, I get a lot of clientele from here when I was in Bowling Brook. That's the thing brought me to Westmont.
Well, are you still in Bowling Brook, or are you?
No, I used to be.
So that restaurant you don't have?
No, I don't. One of my friends.
What restaurant do you have right now?
Two thirteen South Larkin in Joliet.
Okay, okay. So somebody else purchased this one?
Yes.
So how long did you own that?
I owned about four years, that one.
And that, you had two in Bowling Brook, though, right?
Yes, used to have same time, both of them.
Both about four years?
Yes.
Why did you give them up? Why'd you sell them?
One of my, both of them, one of the, on the Bowton was my partner was, he says, okay, I want to buy you out. I says, okay, then that's the time I opened Joliet. So I don't have any partner there. I've been selling about eight years there.
Mr. Ahmad, I just have one more question for you. Normally, we see the application and stuff. Don't give me your address, but what town do you live in? Because normally it tells us.
Bowling Brook.
You live in Bowling Brook?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Anyone in the public or the Board? With that being said, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everybody.
You'll be on our agenda next Tuesday evening for consideration. Thank you. Next item, 222 Willard Place. Board to consider zoning code variance to permit a fence to encroach into the required thirty-five-foot front yard setback.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Iris Cologne, and I'm here with my husband Hector. We live at 222 Willard Place, and to quickly recap, we replaced a fence, we applied for a permit. The permit was approved. Evidently, it wasn't up to code after it was approved. It was rejected. We came, we, we presented the contract that we had from the contractor. That was attached to the permit. All of that was approved, but then, when they came out for the final inspection, it was rejected. They, I guess there's some question about a replace rather than a new fence, but it's been there for twenty years. And we just replaced it. And it is, it's out a little further, but that's to cover a patio that we have in the front, so. I'm just asking that you guys approve a variance for me.
Any comments from Board members? I don't have a problem with it at all.
I, you know, especially in that it was erroneously, erroneously issued fence permit that, you know, perhaps there was an error, obviously there was, but we don't have any drawings or anything, so I don't, I can't visualize this, but I can see where planning and zoning unanimously agreed that.
I, I have some pictures.
Photos could help, because I know we were faxed over some of this information, Shannon faxed, but the pictures did not come out good.
I didn't bring the copies.
Yeah, and, and the pictures don't come out good, they're so dark, so that would.
I knew they had to be a lot brighter than what we.
Hi. Yeah.
How, how tall is that?
Six foot.
Six foot. So where was it before?
Same place.
Same place.
It's the same place. It's been there. We just replaced it.
Yeah, but you just got through saying something about you brought it out a little bit, or something?
No, 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 no. No, it's been there all this time. We have a stone patio, let me show you this, on the other side. And twenty years ago, when it was there, when we decided to put the stone patio in, it's always been that way around there. And I know the codes have changed in the meantime, but that's how it's always been, and we didn't know that at the time, or we would have, you know.
The fence that was there, we used the same holes, well, the contractor did, to put those poles that are there, that is holding that new fence. He actually used the same holes. She's saying that they went out a little bit, but what she's saying is that it went, it's going out a little bit past the house, not that we went, or that they made it bigger than it was.
Fred or Shannon?
Used the same holes that were there.
Okay.
Our material says that it, it encroaches on the thirty-five-foot front yard setback. What's the encroachment?
It's this little part that, that sticks out in the front there, Trustee.
I mean, what are we talking about?
About eight, six to eight feet.
Right, they're required.
It should be flush with the house, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
The required setback is thirty-five, and it's about twenty and a half.
Okay.
The entire house, I think, you know, was a legal non-conforming structure because the front yard setback in the three districts have been changed, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I have no problem with it all. I think, you know, it's an attractive fence, it's not blocking the line of sight for any traffic or anything like that.
And we don't.
I have no problem with it.
We asked the neighbors and everybody else in the neighborhood, and, you know, nobody seems to have a problem with it. They actually came for the meeting. I mean.
And this is a replacement with like-kind and quality of what was there previously. Normally, when we do this, we require the fence to be brought into compliance. The unique circumstances of them having a portion of their patio that, that juts into the front yard, we think is the reason staff supports this. We do have some conflicting documentary evidence in the file, but staff is fully supportive of this request for the variance.
I think that's fine.
Was the previous fence solid?
Yes.
As this one is?
Same, same kind of fence.
Yeah, it's the same kind of fence. We got a permit to put a patio there where the fence, the, the old fence was, so that when we took the old fence down, it, I mean, it's exactly like the old fence. So if this fence was twenty years old, it would look like the old one that they took out. You know, there's no difference in, I mean, I, I don't know.
Okay.
It's fine.
I don't know what else to say, I mean, this.
Any other, any other questions from Board members?
No, I don't have a problem.
No one from the audience is here to make a comment on this request? We thank you for coming in, and this will be on our agenda for Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's kind of interesting, actually. Now, we're.
Oh, you haven't seen anything else. Now you know why you don't watch them.
Thank you. Next item, 401 Linley. Board to consider the following. A zoning code variance request to permit a shed to encroach in the front and side yard setbacks, and B zoning code variance request to permit the construction of an accessory structure less than ten feet from the principal structure.
Good afternoon. Jeff Burkmire, 401 Linley. My wife and I have lived at that property since 1994, and the shed that we're looking to seek a variance for is a replacement of an older existing structure that had begun to rust and looked kind of shabby, so we tore that down and had this one started, and realized that we had not gotten the required permits in advance, so we stopped that work and are here seeking a variance to leave the shed in the section of the house it is. I don't know if you guys have pictures of a shed? I don't know if you guys have pictures of a shed or the layout of the plot, but it's, you know, it's along the side lot and next to our, our garage.
Thank you.
There you go. It's kind of this one in the lower structure here is where the shed would be, if allowed to stay there. And then, it's, it's a little bit, it's different than the old structure in that it's, it's, you know, it looks like part of the house, almost. It's gonna match the paint, and the roof is gonna be the same, and it, much more attractive than the old one. And we won't need to run, we won't need to run the fence where it was before either. We'll stop that short of the shed, so it'll end at that point where the shed begins down, down here in that corner.
So you said you replaced an old metal one?
Yes.
Now, this one is stick-built, you're building it from scratch, or is it from a company?
It's a, it's a custom-built shed. I had some contractors come out and put it together. It's a, it's a stud wood with the fiberboard exterior and, and a wooden floor.
And the one-hole wall is actually your garage wall?
No, it's not attached to the garage, it's, it's a few inches.
It's budding up, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's got its own separate wall on that?
It, it could be moved. It's heavy, big, but it could be moved.
Okay.
Well, alls I can say is, being your neighbor across the street, if it's as maintained as well as the rest of your property, I don't have a problem with it at all. I mean, it's, it's a very unique situation, the way this house is set on this property, it's right on the corner, and it's one of those unique scenarios, and, I mean, I, I don't foresee any problems with this at all. I really don't. I think it's a, I think it's a very straightforward situation. It's a little bit different than a lot of the others, based on old, you know, codes or whatever, and what it used to be, probably, but nowadays, no. I mean, these are things we're dealing with in these neighborhoods, on these smaller lots and the way they're configured, so I would, I'm a hundred percent behind.
Is it the same exact size as the one that you took down?
No, it's larger than the one we took.
How much larger?
It's probably, it's probably two to three feet longer, and maybe six inches closer to the south edge of the lot.
Okay, so you're still within your lot coverage?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're on our lot. In fact, with the fence, the way it was, when we pulled out the old shed and put this one in, it, it wouldn't have taken up more space or anything in the fence, it would just cut down on the space the weeds were growing between the fence and the shed.
Yeah, sounds fine. Sounds good to me.
Any other comments?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our agenda for Tuesday evening. Thank you. Next item, Two Thirty-three and Two Thirty-five North Cass. We just received a comment from the petitioner just before this meeting began this evening to request to have this, this item moved to the September sixteenth agenda, because they were unable to be here this evening. Any comments? Next item, Three Five Hundred Midwest Road, T-Mobile with Oak Brook Marriott. Board to consider zoning code variance request to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Good evening, committee members. I'm Alex Novak with Novation Group Consulting, Park Ridge, Illinois. I represent T-Mobile in the area of site acquisition, zoning permitting. I was given a search area by T-Mobile earlier this year. In the process of that, I try to go out and I find applicable sites to build communication sites, basically by meeting the criteria that doesn't work for their RF engineers, is it buildable, is it zonable, is it leasable? What we've come up here for a solution is the rooftop of the Oak Brook Hills Marriott. We always try to co-locate on existing structures first, so we avoid building new towers everywhere. The Oak Brook Hills Marriott does have existing telecommunications equipment on top of it. It does have a number of antennas currently on the rooftop, so we would be sharing rooftop space with those carriers. We're in the process of finalizing our lease agreement with the Marriott. We would be installing six antennas in a total of three sectors, so three separate installations of two antennas each, with an equipment platform essentially in the middle of the, in the middle of the rooftop. Here's the equipment platform. There is Sector One, there's Sector Two, and the final two antennas would be mounted to the screen wall surrounding the equipment. So as the zoning code states, we need a variance to do this. Westmont zoning indicates that anything over a total of three antennas on an existing structure requires a variance. There's already more than three up there, so we are proposing to add six more, and we're seeking approval of that variance. I would entertain any questions you may have.
What's the total height?
The total height is, we have an elevation drawing up here. Existing antennas are located there, and existing antennas are located up there on the penthouse center line of those. Existing antennas are a hundred and thirty-five feet. Let's see. We're not exceeding the, here's our antennas right here, so we are at about a hundred and twenty-six feet for our antennas.
I think that thing on the, what I got in the, could read, it's hard to read what they emailed us, but it looked like it might be, that one structure would be like seven feet tall?
Yes.
Did I read right? Okay. So on top of the roof would be seven-foot-tall structure, and that one will have an antenna.
Yes, that's right there.
Does that mean, is that antenna taking up the entire seven-foot height, so all three antennas are seven feet tall?
The antennas will be six feet tall, so, yeah, they, they won't exceed the top of that seven-foot screen wall.
Okay.
I hate to do this to you, but I'm gonna request our village attorney be specific in what we, what we decide we're gonna allow. If you're gonna say that those antennas will not exceed the seven-foot, foot structure on top of there, that our, our ordinance say that?
The ordinance, and I will apologize, because the ordinance, Attorney Perez oftentimes helps me prepare the ordinances, I got them before the meeting, so.
Okay.
I always put into the ordinances, I'll double-check, that the ordinance, that the development has to comply with the site plan submitted to the village in conjunction with the variance request. It's in every variance ordinance that's been approved recently. So whatever's on those plans is what you're gonna be approving by way of the variance.
Okay.
If you want something more specific, please let me know, and I'll be happy to put it out.
Well, I'm asking for a reason, because, no offense to T-Mobile, I like 'em, but I'm defending plenty of things where T-Mobile didn't quite stick to the plan.
Okay.
That's all I'll say about that. So I want you to stick to this plan.
You got it.
And the other thing is, have you got any, since this is at Oak Brook Hills, were there any private residences within twelve-hundred feet?
No, I don't believe so, Shannon. Doesn't say so.
Within twelve-hundred feet, did that, is that far enough away from the townhouses? The?
Yeah, because this is, you know, the hotel is kind of adjacent to the golf course property, so there's a lot of open space around.
Right, I know. And, but you've got the townhouses to the east of the hotel.
Right.
Oak Brook Hills residences, and I'm sure you're over twelve-hundred feet to the condos that are on the other side of Cass. But I want to, you know, if, in the event, those residences are within twelve-hundred feet, we need to let them know those antennas are going up.
Yeah, everybody was properly notified, correct?
Okay, I'm just making sure, because some of the residents there might have something to say.
Yeah, we did all the proper notice requirements and things like that.
Okay.
Going back to the size again, if it's about six feet tall, are they slender, or are they square, six by six?
No, they're not six by six, they're panel antennas, so they are.
They're tall.
Yeah, they're, they're slender, they're probably six inches, six to eight inches wide.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be this big, huge wall?
No, 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 no. Very, very similar to the antennas that are currently existing on the rooftop.
I read in the report that you're gonna be trying to get the color to blend in with the hotel and things like that.
Yeah, we do get the exact paint specs, we match it to blend it in, so, yeah, we'll try to camouflage it as best as possible.
Six feet tall, make them look like people up on the roof.
Just joking.
Skinny people.
There you go, real skinny. Side views.
What are the other antennas up there? What companies do they represent?
I know Cricket is up there. Shannon, do you know if there are any other carriers up there?
Cricket was the only one that I knew for certain, just based on the information that we have, but there are, I think, at least two or three other carriers. I believe there's at least sixteen pieces of equipment up there.
It's definitely become kind of a hub for a telecommunications site in Westmont, so it's, I mean, because of the, the height, I mean, the height is fantastic, you can, RF really can achieve their coverage objectives, propagating off that rooftop eliminates the need for a tall tower.
And I believe, I believe I also read that their engineering structure for the weight is being tested.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did a structural analysis of the rooftop to make sure the loading is fine, make sure the weight is distributed properly, so, yeah, that's all, we have submitted that with zoning. Obviously, we'll submit that with a building permit application, so, yeah, the, the studies are done.
I know, we, the village receives revenue from the antennas that we have on our water towers. Does the village receive any revenues from this, or does all of the revenue go?
No, the leases with the Marriott.
Okay. Is there anything we could do to help share?
Oh, I know.
Require all antennas to be on the water tower?
Shouldn't, yeah, can we pass an ordinance where they have to be on our property?
Yeah, right. Those are the only two questions that I have. Any other questions? With that being said, will be on our agenda for Tuesday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Knights of Columbus, Board to consider granting an annual request from the Knights of Columbus to solicit funds for persons with intellectual disabilities. Anyone here to speak on this?
No questions. Pretty cut and dried, I think they've done this for about the last thirty years.
Hearing no comments, next item. Westmont Darian Boy Scout Troop Ninety-seven Popcorn Sale. Board to consider motion authorizing a popcorn sale fundraiser by Boy Scout Troop Number Ninety-seven, including door-to-door solicitations from September eighth through November sixteenth, two thousand and ten.
No questions.
No questions?
Nope.
What time do they finish up? Isn't there a time that, that they have to?
Yeah.
Like, second o'clock, or, I mean, six, whatever it says.
Trick or treating.
Yeah, it's like trick or treating.
That's all in the application.
That's all.
Well, just because of the young kids and.
That goes all out in their information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item, One Eighty West Ogden, Board to consider request from Pappy's Restaurant, One Eighty West Ogden, for an exception to the sprinkler requirement.
Hi, my name's Tim Thanosaurus, I'm a representative of Pappy's Restaurant Group. We're here in front of you today for your consideration to approve a variance for the sprinkler requirement on this particular restaurant. My client is George Pappas, he owns the Pappy's Restaurants and is a contract purchaser of this particular piece of property, which is on Ogden Avenue. He's gonna turn it into a fast-food, family-oriented restaurant. Currently has one at Evergreen Park. They serve hamburgers, hot dogs, roast beef sandwiches, yido sandwiches, ice cream, ice cream cakes, and, again, it's a consideration for the sprinkler system, which we've been required under the current ordinances, that we add a sprinkler system to this building. It doesn't have a system now. The bigger imposition is not so much just the sprinkler system, but in having to bring water underneath Ogden Avenue to the building, because the current system is on another part of someone else's subdivision, and it's not in capacity. So we're just asking for your approval for us to have an exception to this, so that we can bring Pappy's into Village of Westmont.
For people who may be watching this on, on television, could you explain just exactly where this building is located and what was there prior, and what is there now?
It's on Ogden Avenue, it's at One Eighty West Ogden Avenue, and it's owned by Arby's Roast Beef Sandwiches. It sits on the north side of the street.
Okay.
And they are looking, they're gonna close that restaurant, it's, it's currently for sale, and, and they're gonna close that restaurant. We're gonna, you know, try to buy it if we can get this approved.
To hear from Fred Kimball, kind of make the call.
Yes, Your Honor, this item is being brought, I'm sorry, free commercial for the Westmont. This item is being brought here at the request of the village board. The board may recall that during our series of public meetings to discuss sprinkler requirements, Mr. Thanosaurus and George, you know, testified as to the hardship, and we talked about the fact that they are served by a water line from the subdivision to the north, which is in unincorporated DuPage County, and that to increase the size of the water line would be very expensive, so this would be a very expensive property to develop. We believe, and I, I think, you know, we can hear from Mr. Daniels and Chief Trout here, that, you know, we, we think we're gonna get a better building, some remodeling, but the, the cost of installing the sprinklers has become an obstacle. So as Mr. Thanosaurus indicated, this would be an exception, not, not a formal variance, but an exception to the sprinkler requirement, and we are bringing this back to the village board, because we received instruction at that time to do this, so that you could give individual consideration to this matter.
Fred, what's the seating capacity of that restaurant?
Right now, the available seating is less than fifty, so if they were to maintain the floor space for the building code requirements for less than fifty, they would still be going from a restaurant to restaurant and not have to remodel or install sprinklers, but once they exceed that fifty capacity, then they would have to sprinkle the building, according to code.
What's the current fire suppression system in the building?
Right now, they just have a fire alarm and a hood system for cooking. And as far as the water, that would be, his talk was about bringing Westmont water into that building. The Liberty Park does have water available nearby, but we had suggested that they contact an engineer to see if that existing water system would be capable of handling a sprinkler system. That we can't comment on.
Your Honor, we would like to point out that the, the proposed plans, and we, we did require the developer to bring in a floor plan to, to show the village board, I think their seating capacity would increase to about seventy, seventy-six, George, so this, this would trigger the sprinkler requirement ordinarily, and these developers are asking for an exception to that requirement, as we were instructed to bring to the village board.
How many other exceptions may or may not be coming before this board, as we've had other discussions on the cost of running the water line for Westmont underneath Ogden Avenue?
I think there are very few other businesses that are served by that Liberty Park water system. This is kind of a unique situation, Your Honor. As was indicated, I don't know whether that, you know, it's questionable at this point, whether that water system would have the capacity to provide a four or a six-inch water line that might be necessary to do this. We don't know the answer to that question. In either case, the developers have indicated it would be very costly.
What about Emmy's Restaurant? What do they have?
I believe, is Director May here? I believe they're served by Village Water?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know who they're served by.
Let's.
Yeah. Emmy's right now just has a fire alarm system, so I'm not, I don't know whose water system they're on, so.
As drawn, it shows at full capacity sixty-eight. What's proposed for a fire alarm system?
We plan on adding a fire alarm system to it.
Which will be directly to, it'll be private company directly to the fire department?
Yes.
Directly to the fire department? Boo.
It's a radio signal, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna do the radio signal.
Okay.
Shall I require that as a condition in the ordinance for this variance?
C.
Or exception?
Yes. I, for one, like I say, I wanna see businesses succeed. A lot of work will go into this, and it will be cost prohibitive, I think, to have to, you know, come up with a sufficient main and run it under Ogden and all of that, so as long as it's gonna be appropriately alarmed, I, I'm in favor of an exception.
Your Honor, in response to your question, Chief Mulhern just kind of reminded me that Emmy's, we believe with virtual certainty, is on Village of Westmont water. We are aware of this due to certain billing situations that have arisen in the recent past.
Are they, are they the ones that not too long ago did tunnel? Somebody did tunnel under Ogden Avenue with a water line. Who did?[1799.94]
That was Suburban, wasn't it?
That was Suburban.
Wasn't it the bowling alley?
No, Suburban's on the south side.
No, it was the car dealership.
On the right side.
Oh, the car dealership, that's what it was. But there was something with the bowling alley, some problem with the water underneath.
Oh, I think they had a, they got, their water service got interrupted because of the drilling.
Because of the car dealership.
Now, I remember.
But I think that the car dealership is, although that part of the main is on the north side of Ogden, but it's like three hundred yards away from this particular property, so they're in an unusual situation.
Could it be any more complicated?
Yes. Good.
Well, what happens is if this doesn't get approved, they probably won't move in.
The building will...
Arby's will be closed. And then unless they decide to put the money in it for, to get it sold, it'll stay empty.
I think there's a definite hardship.
Unless they change the use of it.
Right.
And I feel good that they connect directly to the alarm system. So if they're closed in the middle of the night, the alarm will go off, we don't have to wait for somebody to notice flames burning through the roof or something. That's the biggest concern I have, and they're a standalone building. So, I have no problems.
Can you give us a little more information on Pappy's? That's a, I assume that's a chain?
Yeah, you know what, maybe I'll have George talk about that. He's the owner, so I'll let him...
I'd like to look at...
Hi, how are you? I have Tim talk, because he's, he's a better talker, that's why he was the fellow talking. Pappy's is a, I am the only, I'm the individual owner, it's not a franchise or anything. I started Pappy's in nineteen ninety-two in Lansing, Illinois. It was a little fast food carryout joint, twenty-six seats, and I sold in ninety-five. And in nineteen ninety-eight, I opened up my current location in Evergreen Park, which I still own and operate myself, Ninety-Fifth and Spalding, two blocks west of Kessie. We're family oriented. I don't like to say we're fast food, we're quick service, because fast food does, I don't know, I'm just not comfortable with that. I'm not fast food. When you come into my place, you'll see mom in little strollers and kids running around. We do big ice cream volume, and we have from hot dogs to ribs and chicken. So I'm a full, I have a full menu. It's not just a little fast food restaurant where you can get a hamburger or a hot dog and be on your way. So if you wanted to come in with somebody and have a rib dinner or a half-chicken dinner, that's available. We have kebabs, everything. It's a, it's a big, I think we had given, I'm not sure if you have a menu, I don't, I do not have one on me today, but it's a full line, but it's not, like I said earlier, I'm not comfortable saying fast food. It's a different, we're a different level. And if anyone has ever made it to Evergreen Park, you would actually see that.
Kind of like a, yeah, it's walk-up. There's not wait staff, but...
We actually give you a little number, you sit down and you put your number on the stand, and we do bring it out. But there's no wait, there's no wait staff.
Like the patio or Uncle Bubbs, that kind of thing.
Can I ask you, how'd you pick Westmont?
Um, good question. Westmont, once again, Tim is a very close friend of mine, we grew up together from little guys, and there's been a bunch of different areas we're looking at, and we like the Westmont area. There's the demographics, there's a lot of things about it, but...
I don't want to answer that.
Yeah, Tim would...
He's right, I directed him here. I, I'm a commercial real estate broker, and one of the first places...
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Sure. Well, I represented Blockbuster Video Stores back in the nineties, and Westmont was our first store in the western suburbs. And that led us into also bringing in Boston Market. And I know that those two stores have been, you know, fantastic stores for both companies. And so when George asked me where would I put a store, I told him I'd put it right on Ogden Avenue, right in the middle of Westmont. So I have, I have a lot of faith in this town, and, like I said, he's a very close friend, so I can't make a mistake.
Right.
Could you do me a favor?
Sure.
Bring some more?
Yeah, no, I'd love to, I'd love to.
And you know, I'm going to ask, we have a very vibrant Chamber of Commerce. I hope you'll consider, seriously, I hope you'll consider getting involved and becoming...
Followed the Chamber in Evergreen Park.
Excellent.
George, a little...
We're getting plugs in for the Chamber.
He'll never admit this, but he's very active in the community. Ball teams come to him for sponsorship, they come back to his place to eat, and really to get their ice cream. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. You know, it's a pretty simple business plan.
Great.
What kind of ice, what kind of ice cream, what brand?
We actually, it's interesting what you said earlier. I, my main ice cream is soft serve, I use a ten percent ice cream. And we also have a dipping station, which we serve Ashby's.
Oh, no.
Cream.
(laughing).
We have eight hand dipped from Ashby's, and then, and then the soft serve. All our ice cream pies and cakes that we make, we make from scratch. We actually cook the cake and back, and then we add the ice cream to it, decorate it, and put whatever the occasion would be, birthday, or this or that, you know.
Oh, nice.
So you have soft serve and regular?
And hand-packed, yes. We have parfaits, we make chocolate-covered bananas, like traditional old-fashioned ice cream shops.
Do you plan on having any outside eating, or outdoor eating area or anything? Or will it just all be inside?
We've thought about it, I'm not quite sure, because if we add it, the way to bring the food out might be a little difficult. I don't know if we can add a door inside to bring it out. So we were thinking about it, but I'm not sure if it would work out properly for my operation.
Maybe in the future.
Sounds like a great concept.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank both of you for coming in. And the, the ice cream, ice cream fanciers will be there to check it out as soon as they...
She'll be on the phone tonight.
If approved by the Board.
I just texted her.
Next item, Traffic Stop Board, Board to Consider a Four-Way Stop Traffic Restriction at the Intersection of Warwick and Melrose. Yes?
Mayor, on July fifteenth, the Village Board was approached by residents of that North Warwick neighborhood, three hundred, four hundred block of Warwick, with a petition to, for requesting a four-way stop at that intersection. It was turned over to engineering, and we initiated the engineering study. The, the, the state statute requires that before any stop sign can be installed, that certain minimum warrants are met, that are published in the manual and uniform traffic control devices. So the engineering study was initiated, we took traffic counts, and we did the investigation with the police department regarding the, for one of the warrants is a, you know, an accident history at the location. There are several warrants available for a always stop, you know, one being a temporary basis before the installation of a traffic controlled, traffic signal that you already know you're going to install. There is a warrant for a high crash rate, or five or more reported crashes in a twelve month period, that, of a type that are susceptible to correction by a four-way stop. And there was only one accident in the previous twelve-month period. There is minimum traffic volume, of which we directly measured with traffic counters out there, and then other criteria that you can use if you're using combinations of warrants. The traffic volume specifies that for, you know, any eight hours of the average day, the traffic on the major street has to be at least three hundred vehicles per hour. And if you meet the three hundred vehicles per hour, those same eight hours, you have to have two hundred vehicles per hour on the minor street. And the highest eight-hour, you know, average that we measured was a hundred and seventy-five. So in all counts, none of the traffic warrants are met to, to suggest installation of a four-way stop. We took this, you know, information, we reported it to the Public Works Committee in August, and because the, you know, I have no recommendation for any, you know, actionable item here tonight, but because the request was made before you at your meeting, it was suggested that I come back and, you know, share the findings with you. If there's any questions, otherwise, there's no recommendation to install a four-way stop.
Steve, I think with all due respect, I think the people in the neighborhood who have to live there may have a little bit more feeling on what's appropriate in that neighborhood and what's not. They're the ones with their kids that are out there, they're the ones that are walking the street. Let's face it, sidewalks are pretty sparse over in that neck of the woods anyhow. They've already got issues of flooding. I think this is something that is a low impact. We are going to be having a Walgreens on the corner of Cass and Ogden. This is also a, what I consider a cut-through street right now, because there's only one stop sign between Ogden and Chicago Avenue. And I think putting another one on there would give the residents a sense of security for their families and their kids, and I'm all in for putting this in there.
I tend to agree with Trustee Scott. I don't think it will eliminate or even reduce cut-through traffic, but it'll clearly slow traffic. And there's a lot of kids in the area, and, you know, there's cut-through streets all over this town. I mean, I, myself, I just use Linden over to Richmond over to, you know, to avoid Cass Avenue. So, you know, you still stop at the stop sign, it's not going to stop the cut-through, but it'll, we think, slow traffic.
Yeah, I'll add only, partially, that it only slows the traffic down at the intersection. It has actually been shown to increase speeds mid-block when used indiscriminately.
They won't be zooming through there.
It's cheaper for the village to put stop signs up than to replace plow blades from hitting speed bumps, correct?
Sure. Yeah, it isn't about, you know, liking the idea or the expense of the sign. It's, I am merely speaking to what is lawfully enabled in the state statute.
I understand that.
Okay.
If you've ever been down Janes, south of Bowton, they have ten speed platforms. And, boy, are they effective. But I would guess that they're awful to maintain. I don't, I agree with you, I don't think, and I'm just, I'm, I'm just being nothing, I understand what you're saying with the stop sign. It may tend to slow it down. It does a little bit where Sue and I live, but people still run them anyway. And I agree with Trustee Scott. The people who live there that are watching these cars buzz by, I don't care if it's three cars an hour, I think they deserve us to pay attention to that neighborhood, especially in light of their concerns with Walgreens going in. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, whatever the studies say, they say, but I'd like to see a four-way stop there.
Maybe more of a preemptive at this point now, before Walgreens gets in there.
Yeah. I guess I have a little, I'm for it, because I have a little problem where I can see, I believe it's a four-way stop on Oak and Des Moines, and I see this as being a much worse intersection than that one is at certain points, and that's why, you know, I think, I don't know if we were that picky when that stop sign went up, maybe many years ago, but I would, I would rather put the stop sign and hopefully save a life than saying, because there wasn't an accident there, or they only had one accident, wait for another accident to come, just to be able to put another sign up, so I'd rather...
Well, if we, I think also, and seriously, I mean this, it sounds like I'm being, you know, a wise-ager about it, but if we had the manpower, we could, we could do unbelievable things with the village coffers. If we had somebody that sat in my driveway and ticketed nothing but people running stop signs at Hampton and Carlisle. Likewise, if all these people think, you know, Walgreens and Warwick is going to be the place to go, I would suspect that there will be, you know, a number of people doing boulevard stops there, and they're going to learn very quickly that, guess what? Our police department will monitor it.
If I can comment on the authority to install stop signs, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the guidelines for multi-way stop applications, which this, as I understand it would be, because it's a four-way stop...
Right.
...does list as an option other criteria that may be considered in an engineering study, and it lists A through D, and they aren't the specific warrants that were mentioned. I would say they're secondary criteria, they should not be given the weight as the primary warrants, but it's general safety concerns that may be present at the intersection, which would provide, in my opinion, justification for a stop sign in compliance with the mandate of state statute, if you go that route.
Can I ask, what would be the precedent set, then? Because I agree with the area, you know, and they've suffered, and this would be a small way to try to help that area, especially if they don't have the sidewalks. But another group comes in, then, and of course, there's kids all over the community, how do we distinguish one from the other and say that you can have a stop sign and you can't?
Well, that's why you go to an engineering study and look at the warrants. The warrants aren't met in this case, so you are setting a precedent. Again, there are these other criteria, such as the need to control left-turn conflicts, the need to control vehicle pedestrian conflicts near locations that generate high pedestrian volumes, et cetera, et cetera. If you believe in looking at these, and you have this material in your handouts, that these are met but aren't met at other locations, then you can justify a denial. Certainly, though, by granting this, you do open up the door to other neighborhood groups coming in and getting the same approval.
And some may be justifiable, and some may be not.
Right.
I think in a lot of cases, if we look at the areas bounded by, I mean, let's just, let's just throw it out there, say Fifty-Fifth Street on the south, and Ogden on the north, and borders east and west. If you go up and down those streets, I am not sure that there's that many intersections that don't have a four-way stop. I know there's, there's some that don't, but I think a lot of them actually have four-way stops. I mean, I know there's, let's see, there's one on Richmond going east, I can't think of the name, maybe it's Oak, I'm not sure, but Richmond side doesn't stop, but the Oak side stops. There's, you know, cross-traffic doesn't stop there, but I think in a lot of the areas, we actually have four-way stops. I mean, I don't have a problem with us putting one there. I mean, even, even if you go by the counts, a hundred and seventy-five versus two hundred, I mean, you're within twenty-five cars, I would say you'll pick up the twenty-five cars after the Walgreens opens in March anyway, which is what their target deadline is. And you know that we've also had the residents in that area were very upset, from what I understand in reading back, and a lot of times was when they put that traffic signal in, there at Jewel.
Well, the other thing is, you know, we, we all know about the flooding situation and Dave Wisprock with his no-wake zone, but that's not a joke. When I was a kid in Clarinet Hills, we used to flood. And we used to go wading out to the street to try to slow cars down, because the difference between cars zooming through there so they wouldn't stall out was the difference between the water staying in our garage and the wake, the waves going into our family room. So if a stop sign, you know, till we get that flooding situation under control, if a stop sign helps somebody with that much of a difference to help slow that traffic down, it makes a difference when it's flooded.
Is there anyone on the Board that has any objection to this stop sign going in?
I don't think so.
If not, in order to move things along, I'm in favor of this stop sign, could we go on to our next item, because we have a lot to cover yet this evening? With that being said, Steve, I appreciate your time and effort that you put into this. Please sit down in the back of the room so we can continue. Thank you. Next item, Fire Alarm Requirement in B-one Mixed-Use Buildings. Board to Consider the Immediate Requirement of Fire Alarms in Mixed-Use Downtown B-one Buildings. We'd like to have our staff give a presentation on this, and if there's anyone in the audience, from the public, that would like to comment on this, remember that we do have a three-minute limitation that we'd like to try to stick to as closely as we can. Fred Kimball.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're here before the Village Board at their direction again with regard to a specific requirement in the downtown B-one Central Business District to require the virtual immediate installation of working fire alarm systems tied into the Westmont Fire Station to protect those buildings where mixed-use type occupancy is present. That is a commingling of commercial and residential occupancies in the same building. When the Board was considering and studied the issue with regard to relaxing the fire sprinkler requirements there, this was something that kind of came out of that discussion, I think, not just by one trustee, but by several trustees at that meeting, as I recall, that we would like to see something like this for the protection of residents that may reside in those units. If there's to be a fire in a commercial unit after hours, we want to make sure that our residents are protected, and if we're going to relax a little bit on the sprinkler requirements, the Board reasoned that this was a necessary requirement going forward. So with that, we have prepared this ordinance for the Board's consideration here this evening.
Many years ago, and John would have to help me out with this, this ordinance was passed in conjunction with a residential fire alarm system. So when we used, worked on apartment buildings and apartment complexes, the mixed-use occupancy was included with that as part of a life safety ordinance amendment. The goal was to have all rented apartment units... The goal was to have all rented apartment units be protected by a fire alarm system. With the onset of Safe and Secure Westmont and further the landlord licensing and changes in the board, there was more aggressive follow-up on fire alarm systems that were not installed or inoperative in many of the buildings. Fire prevention with the assistance of the building department specifically went after the higher hazard, the larger complexes, the apartment buildings with multiple units in it. And the mixed-use, which is usually just the one apartment, sometimes with two, was left to be picked up as we were able to due to budget constraints and manpower constraints. So we're at that stage now where we're almost 100% with all the apartment buildings in the village, and we're working with the mixed-use buildings in the downtown B1 district. So this is an ordinance that was existing, had nothing to do with the ordinance in 2009 where we changed commercial buildings requiring fire alarm systems. So having said that, well, are there any questions that I can answer before we?
The apartment buildings in the B1 district right now, what's the status for their fire alarm systems?
The apartment buildings or the mixed-use buildings?
The apartment buildings.
There are a few buildings left. Many are already in court. There are some that are almost at that stage where they're getting the citations. There are a few left.
I just want to make sure that the apartment buildings that are located within the B1 district are going to fall under the same category as the mixed-use. Crossmont Tunes Funeral Home next to Westmont, Floral.
Yeah, the Floral and the apartment building where...
Dilworth, next to Dilworth.
I think, is that more than two units?
Oh, yeah, it's four.
Four, okay. I'd have to look on the status to give you that. Also, Westmont Restaurant fell into that category.
Doug, I have a question on the sheet that you provided us a few meetings ago about the B1, I think it came from you, the B1 addresses that have living quarters, mixed-use living quarters ahead above. Many, many, in fact, most of them, the answer is yes, they have an alarm system, at least on the sheet that you gave us.
That sheet has been updated, so...
Oh, it has? It's been updated again?
Yeah, and we're continually working.
Okay, well, the question I have is if it says yes, it has an alarm, does that mean it has an alarm that is being monitored? Or does that mean it has an alarm that people who are living there will hear?
Fortunately, when that sheet originally came out, we used our database, and when the crews had gone out and they saw smoke detectors in a building, they would say the building had a fire alarm, when indeed it did not. It had battery-operated smokes.
Okay.
So since we have gone through this list again to assure that if we say yes, there are a fire alarm system with a panel being monitored.
So, what's your best guess? How many of these types of buildings are already being monitored?
About 50%.
So about half?
There's roughly 40.
Can we get an updated sheet?
You can.
Have a chance?
We, we're working on it today, but I will make sure that by next week you get it.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a difference between the multifamily smoke that you're doing? Is that a smoke heat or is that strictly smoke? Is there a difference from what you're doing to the multifamily than that we're asking for the businesses?
No, no difference at all. Fire alarm systems are by code defined as to what...
Should they have to put these panels every so often, and they have to have pole things?
Right, they need pole stations at the exits. They need audiovisual devices so they can alert. And there's a decibel rating at the pillow with the door closed that it has to meet. So if it's in a hallway of an apartment building, and we shut the doors when we test it and we go into the bedroom, if it's not loud enough, they have to put a device in to the unit themselves, which is actually what they ended up doing at one of the top twin-like towers when they redid the modification of those buildings and redid the whole inside. They actually reworked the complete fire alarm system and installed audio devices in every unit. Smoke detectors are local alarms, which means just the resident is alerted because there's so many false alarms. Smoke detectors in hallways and stairways are tied into the system. So if a fire occurs and the smoke gets out into the hallway, then we're alerted.
Well, I know you had the downtown scheduled to have all this stuff done by 2012, I think it was, your deadline.
Well, again, that's just commercial buildings. It's not mixed-use. So by 2013, if you owned a gas station, you needed a fire alarm in it. Mixed-use was an ordinance that is 10 years old, roughly.
So, let's say the drugstore downtown.
Yes.
Would he put the, would he be required, I don't know if he is connected, but would he be required to put the smoke heats in?
They do have a fire alarm system.
I know, but he would be required.
At this point, yes, they are. Harrelson's Garage is a good example. He has the apartment above it. He does not have a fire alarm in that building. Under this older ordinance, he's on our hit list to have a fire alarm installed.
Okay, but why would he, okay, so he will have to have one?
Because he's a mixed-use occupancy.
Because he's mixed-use.
Otherwise, he would have two years till 2013 or three years.
But that, I think, is what I was trying to make a point of back then, is if they're on this schedule that they're going to have to have it, what I was looking for is just some kind of a sound alert, whether it's a matter of making one alarm connection downstairs that will trigger an upstairs alarm to tell the people to get the heck out of there while they still have, because you were giving them this time to collect their money to be able to do this. I'm not looking, I didn't know you're talking pole stations and panels. I'm looking at just a way of connecting smoke down below that would trigger something on the next floor above to tell you to get out of that building and something extremely...
And vice versa.
Right, and work both directions or all three floors, whatever it takes, but something minorly costing until 2012, when they can do the full thing and the, you know, panel pull system.
Well, that's a residential system, and that's not permitted under use in commercial buildings by codes.
But I'm saying we have an option, and we can let this place go unprotected till 2012, or we can ask them to do a minor thing, electrical and not a very expensive service. I mean, they even need just something up in a hallway. If it's a unit that has two or three or four units upstairs, just something in the hallway loud enough to tell those residents to get out of that building.
In most instances, they'd just go get battery-operated smoke detectors and do that.
But that's not going to tell them if it's downstairs.
But it still involves wiring and, see, it gets complicated because there's no monitoring of the device, and you get a false sense of security. If you were in a building and you saw some detection, you might think, had you moved in after the system was installed, you saw this, you think, oh, the fire department's going to come if it gets called. And we wouldn't because there'd be no way for us to be notified.
I'm just worried about getting the residents out. If they get out and they can be calling as they're heading out. The other thing, too, we never discussed was owner occupied, which I know we have at least two of them downtown. I don't know if Harrelson's Garage is a tenant or not.
It's a tenant.
Okay, but, but the thing is that, did we want to treat it the same? And when I was talking with one of them, I think she was more worried about the sprinklers, how costly it would be, and the thing is, while they're living in that building, their business is open. When they go on vacation, the business is closed, so nobody's in that building. And I said, well, maybe we can talk about, do they have to connect to the sprinkler or at least to the fire alarm where, when they're gone, we don't have to wait for the fire to be protruding through a window or the roof because, you know, nobody's home to let them know there's a fire in there. So that was another thing, is whether we want those owner occupied, you know, buildings, the owner occupied ones, to be connected. They're very worried about the sprinkler because I know they're on the Bronx side of Cass Ave.
Pat, I don't see a distinction between owner occupied and rented. It's mixed-use, residential and commercial.
But there still is. Owner occupied means when they're on vacation, the business is closed.
Not always.
Nobody's in the house.
Doesn't matter.
Not always.
I know it doesn't, but it does. It does to me, and I'm saying it's a sprinkler. I wanted them to, I told her, wouldn't you like to know what, if you connect to the fire department, that when you're on vacation, your business is closed, that the alarm will ring and the fire department will come before somebody has to see the flames through the roof? And she said that would not bother her as much as the sprinklers, the cost of bringing a $50,000 sprinkler. And also, are we counting, what are we counting in the building? Are we counting the business itself, the size of the business?
No.
Or are we counting the entire residence, their home, their private residence?
If it's a mixed-use occupancy, a residential unit and a business that falls under that.
So even a private residence.
Or if it's an apartment building, if it's more than two units.
So even a private residence.
Yes. It's a hard nut to crack because we have some three flats and four flats that the entire family lives in that building. It's an apartment building, but it's family occupied. It's the brother and it's the sister and the kid.
I'm not willing, I'll tell you flat out, I'm not willing to take the time to bust up anything other than use. Not type of occupant, not size of building, not who lives there, not family connections. It's use, commercial and residential. That's, that's my feeling on it. I don't care any other criteria. It's residential, period.
Rental is a business. Residential is not a business.
It's use, residential use. Commercial is not a business.
But then my house is a use. It's residential.
Anyway, that's my feeling on it.
But it's not a mixed-use. Your home is not a mixed-use. Well, it could be. I could have a computer thing in my home. A lot of people use their home.
Westmont.
A lot of people have their business in their homes. That's a mixed-use.
Well, I think the one thing that everybody is not looking at here is what was stated very emphatically at the beginning of this is, what we're looking at in front of us with a mixed-use situation is something that is actually already on the books and has been there for 10 years. Now, so this coming to us at this point in time is just now bringing back as a reminder situation of something that was passed by previous boards, which actually encompass this particular item that we're looking at. It's already required. It's just that they haven't had the time and staffing to go around to each one of these buildings and say, look, here's our code. This is what it is. You need to be compliant with it. Now, I don't have a problem, we've got this 2013 date set in concrete. Now, the problem that concerns me with a multi-use building is what, what service, you know, or what disservice, or the question I would have, what about the life safety of someone who's living in one of these buildings? Okay? It's not alarmed. What happens to those people?
That's why I brought it up.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, Pat, is it's already on the books. It's already there.
In 2013?
No, no, no.
No.
No, now. It's in there now. It was passed approximately 10 years ago.
This smoke heat.
This, this whole, this mixed-use item.
As the mayor would say, does anybody want to change the current code, or shall we just ask for enforcement of it?
That's what this issue comes down to.
Right.
It's, it's on the books. It's been on the books for years. As you said, I think very well, staff hasn't gotten around to adequately enforcing this. And it was brought up at a recent meeting, well, what about these mixed uses? And it was brought to your attention, it's on the books. And so if you want to make enforcement a priority, then you have to direct staff to make enforcement, you know, a priority for this.
So, I mean, basically, in a situation for discussion purposes here, it's there. The only question would be is if, if we want to go in and tear this code apart, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
I don't either.
I don't want to, I don't want to go breaking these codes apart again. I mean, I...
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
This, the way it's written up is applicable to the B1 district only. There are circumstances in the code, and I don't know if any actually exist now, but they could in the future, where business and residential is allowed. In the B2 district, it's allowed as a special use where residential quarters are required for security and management on site. These quarters shall be one dwelling unit. Also, I think as part of a recent amendment, in the B2 district, residential dwelling units may be permitted as part of a plan unit, or plan development, where the majority use of the non-residential portion of the principal building is office use. I think that was related to a specific request that either came in, I don't know if it was processed and approved or not, but they want to have a mixed-use in the B2 district, and we, the board laid out some parameters for that. I think that envisioned more multiple condos on top and business on the bottom as opposed to a couple apartment buildings. I don't know how that varies, but in any event, do we want to restrict this just to the B1 district, or should we be a little broader in its application in case some of these other scenarios exist?
I'd say amend it and expand it. That way it's fair across the board.
Now, right now, it's not limited to the B1 district. It's applicable everywhere. The write-up says the B1 district, so I need to know for the ordinance, do you want it restricted more than what it is right now?
Nope.
No, keep it open.
Nope, leave it the way it is.
Next question. The way it's currently worded is apartment buildings with more than one story or with more than two dwelling units or mixed-use apartment buildings have to have this fire alarm system. The more than two dwelling units threw me because if there's a, what happens if there's a business with a studio apartment, one dwelling unit above it?
That's mixed-use.
That's mixed-use, so it has to have an alarm system.
Yes.
It says a fire alarm system in accordance with section 7-6. Is that smoke heat with pole alarms?
Correct, that's a full fire alarm system.
The only other question I had is, there was discussion at the last meeting, I think in the write-up, about a time for requiring implementation of this. It's an ordinance on the books, but I think you discussed 60 to 90 days, and that's what was in the staff write-up. You know, or do you want to require immediate enforcement where you can go in and start giving warnings and then tickets, et cetera? Or do you want to get the word out, not change the code, the text of the existing ordinances, but just put it in the ordinance you're approving that says, this has been on the books, it hasn't been enforced, we want to enforce it, you have 60 days or 90 days?
No, I think what it ought to be right now is make it known that it is on the books, that's the way it is. We'll hold to our 2013 line that we're at right now. Gives them plenty of time to get this done. Now, I, on the other hand, those who have those type of buildings, I would think, would want to do something for the residents above the businesses or whatever, anywhere in this town, just as a thing to do. But as far as saying 60 to 90 days, no. It's a code that's within the parameters right now. It covers these particular items, where we've already set a deadline of 2013 that all of these need to be done.
I'm not comfortable with that. This code has been in place for 10 years. We have not enforced it. I don't think we should penalize our business owners because we failed to enforce an ordinance that's already been on the books. I'm not saying we should waive it or not have it at all. I'm saying I think we should give them a reasonable length of time to do it and that the 2013 should stay to give people and business owners the appropriate length of time to come up with the money. I mean, these are not inexpensive systems to put in, certainly not as expensive as a sprinkler, but, you know, I would like to see us say, you know, 120 days. I'd like to be a little more reasonable and give them time to get this in.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, whoa, timeout a second, timeout a second.
Just my opinion.
Okay, okay, but now, we're talking about, we have talked about in the past in many given situations that we want to try to lessen the burden upon the businesses within this town, okay? And in a lot of cases with the B1 district. Now, that being said, we now find that this has been on the books and been on the books for a long time. We already know, we already know that the deadline, drop deadline is 2013 for all of this to be done. So if we sit here right now and tell them, well, we're going to give it 120 days for you to have it done, then we're contradicting ourselves in a way by saying that we're trying to help you, you know, down...
No, I think we're just being a little more reasonable. I mean, we've, we've made the changes with the sprinkler. You know, trustee Clevino brought up the concern, and I think it was very valid, that when you have people living in these buildings, there needs to be some sort of protection. I am not even sure that we would have caught that we've had this on the books for 10 years if she hadn't brought that up.
Oh, thanks.
No, I'm very serious. I mean, shame on us.
I know.
You know, it happened.
I didn't even know it was on the books.
Okay, so now we fix it and we move on. But I, I think it's unfair to say to these business owners, you need to have this done in 30 days, or you need to have this done in 60 days. I mean, these are people that... mean, these are people that are trying to lease empty spaces. There's, you know, trying to sell buildings. I think we need to give them a little bit of time, reasonable length of time.
Yeah. But when I brought it up, I wasn't bringing up pole stations and, and the heat things. I thought, I was looking at some kind of, just an alarm system in that building to warn a resident to get out.
Just to ensure that there's a way to get out.
And at a reasonable price. Now, if we're looking into the full...
If we've had, if we've had this on the books and we decided 2013, this was done a while back, obviously before I came on the board, why do we even need an ordinance? Why are we talking about it?
That's what I don't understand. Why, why, why are we even talking about this? We've, we've already set the deadline, and the business owners know this. And I understand the concern of residents living above. Personally myself, if I owned a building, I would put this system in. I'd find a way to do it prior, prior to that. But unfortunately, we have some owners in this town that don't care.
So are you saying do it now or live with the 2013?
No. I'm saying stay with the 2013.
Oh, because just a minute ago you said I want to know.
That's what I said all along. I said, part of it was, was 60 to 90 days. What I said was, forget that. It's on the books. We got 2013. When it all comes to fruition, leave it as 2013.
For multi-use buildings, you're saying, for, for units that have apartments up above? Have those not be required?
They're required right now.
The question as I heard was, the concern came that the buildings that had apartments above would be required to put those systems in sooner. They don't have any apartments. Then they go to 2013 before it's required. That was my understanding. If that's not correct, somebody correct me.
Okay, but I think, I think, I think what happened, though, in the meantime was that we now, we now have in front of us that this code has been in place all this time.
Right.
And so for us to now take this and try to correct what should have been corrected over all these years and giving them a 60, 90, 120, 180 day deadline to get this completed, I agree. I would love to tell them, "You know what? Guess what? You've had 10 years to do this. This is on the books."
Can't do that.
We didn't know it was on the books.
You do, you know, we didn't, we didn't know it was on the books.
It was on the books in either 2005 or later. It's either 2005 or 2009 were the last two amendments to the code. This is from the 2003 light safety code.
Light safety, but it was prior to the 2003, I think. So...
But, but the prior, we've got a listing of all the amendments. The last prior amendment was June 19th, 2000. I don't think the 2003 edition was published in the year 2000.
No, but I'm, I know I, I've been in the bureau for 10 years and that wasn't, I think that was changed before the 2003 edition.
So this was, okay.
So it was just carried over. I mean, I would like to see, I would like to see the, those type of buildings maybe go to the top of the pile.
Well, I think that's the reason it's on the agenda. That's exactly why we're talking about this tonight, is it was brought up, and I think rightfully so, that, you know, when you have a mixed use, you need some sort of system. You know, I think we all made the assumption that what trustee Klebanow meant was, you know, right to the fire station, right to being monitored, when really I think we learned tonight that wasn't exactly what you had in mind. You know, the reason, the point itself has not changed. We have mixed use businesses, buildings, that we want to make sure have appropriate protection. That's over and above, you know, whenever the ordinance came in or whenever it's going to have to be. So I think that's what we need to talk about is, you know, that. What are we going to, what are we talk, what are we going to do? What?
First thing we do is we scratch out B1. That comes out of the agenda.
Well, no, but this is, but we're, this is part of the B1 that we're talking about.
No, it's actually mixed use throughout the village. No, throughout the village.
Okay, okay. Well, mixed use then.
Throughout the village.
So, but primarily, I mean, the real reason is it's, the reason it came to us was because of B1.
Over the last two years, we probably have installed 100 new fire alarm systems, not upgrades, but buildings that were without them. So we've been actually working very hard these last couple of years at trying to implement the code. With this mixed use occupancy, the buildings that we go after aggressively are buildings that change hands where they're vacant and buildings that are remodeling. So a new business moves in, we would go after those buildings then. In some instances, they may have been unoccupied for two years. The owner doesn't have any rental income. We've given them a chance to collect a couple months' rent and then, but we document whatever it is that we've agreed to. And the chief is always in agreement with what's going on as far as giving some time to comply with the different buildings. We do understand the economic crisis now versus what it was three years ago, four years ago, so.
Makes sense. I, I think one of the other problems, and, and I talked with, if you don't mind, it was Corinne, one of the problems is they, the business owners are having trouble getting an exact idea of price, what this is going to cost. And, and if it's okay with the board, I'd like to, if Corinne wouldn't mind coming and talking with us on it, because I think she needs to be very...
Let's, let's make sure that we, we've heard from staff. There are other people besides Corinne that want to testify. Have we heard from staff? Are there any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Then go open it up to public.
What about, what about the revamped funeral home on Cass? Where does that stand with fire protection?
Toons, Toons or Westmont Chapel.
Westmont Chapel.
They're vacant.
Right.
And they will install a fire alarm when they get an occupant.
They're going to put in the proper system?
They are aware that they will have to put a fire alarm in when they get an occupant. Right now, both the apartment and the chapel are vacant.
Okay.
Toons just put a brand-new system in a couple months ago.
Wow.
Chief Trout.
We want to make sure, we want to make sure that the board and everyone understands too, is that we haven't stopped doing the inspections. We got the large apartment complexes done, as Director Daniels stated earlier. And now we are, now that we have done that, now we're working in other areas of the village. And we've, as the mayor can attest to, we've had some individuals that needed some extra time, which we have given them. And so it's an ongoing process. And so there are building owners, such as Westmont Chapel, that, that we've talked to. We have a working agreement with that, that business, that as soon as they become sufficient enough in which to pay for the alarm system, then that will be installed. So, you know, the fire department's been diligent in seeking to improve our, our fire systems within the town. And so, you know, what you're talking about is something that we've, that we're working with and the business community, you know, on each and every area of the town. So I want to make sure that that's clear, that I believe we probably have less than 20 buildings in the entire town that might have, that does not have a fire alarm system.
Some.
So, just take, you know, the whole picture of the town. You know, we're talking about a small group of buildings, all right, and which we're working at getting those systems into. Today, we met with the Chamber of Commerce, and a little bit later, they probably want to speak to you about some of the ideas that they have.
Chief, I'm still not clear. When we say "fire alarm," are we saying it's not hooked up, or are we just saying the battery operated?
No, we're talking about a system which we have a complete system within the building and that it has a transmitter to a central station.
So every, every building, the businesses, you know, mixed use and all that, they all have fire alarms, whether it's battery operated or not, they all have some kind of alarm?
We're saying we probably have about 20 buildings in town that either are partially there or do not have anything. Probably less than that, but about 20.
20 in the B1 district.
B1. B1 district we're talking about.
And when you say do not have anything, they don't even have a battery-operated one, is what you're saying?
That's a smoke alarm.
They don't have anything.
See, our problem is this, getting out into these buildings just to check, and since some of these buildings might have alarms, let's just say that they had an alarm system, it was checked by the fire department, and then they move. And the, the building owner or the, the business moves out, and we are unaware that they're no longer, their system is no longer hooked up until the following year or so, until we come around again and are able to detect whether or not they have a working system or not. So that's, it's, it's almost like a moving target.
Yeah.
And we're doing our utmost best to, to make sure our community is safe.
But trustee, haven't you corrected me? But they have smoke alarms, is what I...
Smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors. Are you saying they don't?
They may or may not. That's some, not something we check for. Battery-operated smoke detector?
Anything to protect the residents or, or the people in there.
That's something, first of all, we can't get into residential units to do inspections. So whether they have them inside the unit, we don't know. The only ones that we actually check on are brand-new construction, residential construction or apartment buildings that are remodeled. We have no enforcement inside residential units. And whether your battery-operated smoke detector works in your house, there'd be no way, it would be not any different than knowing if somebody's apartment building worked.
So a multifamily ordinance doesn't affect the situations like above Westmont Pharmacy?
It does.
Okay, it does?
Yes.
So we do have a way to check?
Well, in some buildings, yes.
In some buildings, okay. But, I mean, but what I'm saying is...
Smoke detectors are local alarms. They're not required to be tied into the system in the units.
Okay.
So maybe just... How about CO detectors?
No. They can be battery-operated also.
So we don't know who has them?
Nope. The only way we can do that is we encourage our crews, if they go in on calls, to reach up and touch the buttons and see if they work and advise a resident. We have programs for the elderly that would be glad to come out and check. We try our best, you know, see the signs for Fire Prevention Week, you know, change the batteries, test your fire alarms. We go on the web. We do everything we can to advise people, but it's up to the individual.
Some of these individuals, if they're in the apartment building, they might say, let's just say that their TV Turner, the battery goes out in it, and then they'll reach up into the smoke detector and take those batteries out, or to use it for a kid's play toy. We have, you know, 1,000, 1,000 stories out how, how people, what they do. You know, we're there with a fire in their apartment, and we check their alarm. You know, there's no batteries in them. So.
Yeah, that's bad. What are we doing?
Any more comments from the board before we let the other people testify? Go ahead. Who's first?
Good evening again, Mayor Ryan and Village Board members. For the record, Larry Forsberg, Executive Director of the Westmont Chamber. I also have with me tonight our President Lorraine DeBrix, Board members, one of our past presidents and property and business owners from the B1 Business District, who all have an interest in this fire alarm topic. First, I want to say thank you for delving into this topic. I don't think in the years I've been with the chamber, I've ever had as many questions and about what the interpretations and what the code and the ordinances are. And as we can see by our discussion tonight, there's, I think we sometimes take for granted Doug Daniels and all the knowledge our fire department has. But we worked very closely with Chief Trout and Doug Daniels over the last couple of days since the board action item was released, getting questions answered, participating in meetings, so we could be prepared to answer and ask questions. Based on discussions with business members from around the community, there's a pretty thorough understanding that this is something that's coming down the road and it's something that's important to light safety. The concern is the speed of the request and the cost of the request. The range that I've gotten from a phone survey is between $2,000 to $9,000 for a system. That varies widely because the size of the building, the type of the building, how many sensors might be needed in the building and so forth. So that's why that range is there. In addition, this first came up in the August 2nd board meeting. When I was on vacation, when I came back in town, I took a look around. I said, "Wow, we do have an awful lot of mixed use buildings in downtown Westmont." And I did take an opportunity to take a look at the report that the fire department prepared, which you all received, I think was at that meeting, and doing a quick analysis of it, it looks like we have 36 mixed use buildings in B1 Business District, at least based on this report. It sounds like it's been updated subsequently. 61% of those are in compliance. So we've got a lion's share of buildings that are in compliance right now. 14, or 39% of those are not. Out of that 14, two of them are currently vacant. In addition to that, I couldn't quite tell, but I know there's, we have at least a handful of those buildings where there's no tenants in there currently, in terms of, on the residential side. So really, we're talking about less than 12 buildings at this time that come into play under this, under this action. Based on the feedback I've gotten from our, our members, our recommendation basically was for immediate fire protections, concerns, to make sure with these building owners that they have at the very least heat and smoke detectors in their buildings, CO detectors. And we really weren't able to come up with an appropriate timeline because of the range of concerns and impact that this has on the business owners. Some were somewhat comfortable in addressing it on a short term, and others were very greatly concerned about the impact on their business. So we'll leave that call to the wisdom of our board. I know we have a few others here that would like to speak, so I'll turn it over next to Corinne.
Oops, you dropped something.
I forgot my wire.
We have a little show and tell here.
Hi, Corinne Belkin. Trustee Klebanow, we were discussing this, and her concern was a downstairs resident and downstairs gets on fire, how will that upstairs residence know? So for a temporary, strictly a temporary solution possibly, and it would be wired, which would, by the way, had to be done years ago in Westmont, when you had a commercial property and you had a residence, a wired smoke detector. And these things can be networked, and you can put the one downstairs and network it to the one upstairs and vice versa, so at least the person has a chance to get out of the building. These buildings aren't that big. It's not like you're talking about a 5,000, even a 5,000 square foot building. Most of them are, you know, 1,200 to 1,500 per floor. So they're going to get out, and there's a front and back, there should be a front and back entrance to all these mixed use buildings, I think. Are there? There should be, right? Front and back entrance?
Generally, yes.
Okay. So that, that may be a temporary solution to wait to 2013, but at least the residents and the business owner are aware of a, of a smoke situation, because the alarm will buzz, it will go off.
To me, that's the perfect solution. I know we had a conversation about this earlier. Question I have for Doug is, just in theory, if we decided as a board that, you know, the 2013 will still stick, or 2012, whichever it is, but that for mixed use in the B1, or if we decide all over town minimally would have to have this type of a system, would we be able to go into these private residents to ensure that they're in fact there? Can we inspect?
No, actually...
No, right?
Right.
So that's the problem that I see with this.
It's the same thing with the landlord licensing that we do now. Unless you pass an ordinance or get a search warrant, they can deny entry.
You know, we've been, and I know this is a real work that we've all been going through with the chamber and all the trustees. And as I said before, we are aware of our ordinances. We are aware of our problems. We're aware of the short falls on these things. And, but we are getting the job done. So if you would like, if you just leave all the ordinances in line, let us work with our community people like we have been doing. Eventually, we get everybody in compliance. There was a large apartment complex with 33 buildings in. And when the Fire Prevention Bureau went up there, we talked to the owner of that large project, and he said, "Give me five years and I'll complete the whole, upgrade everything you want, but I can't do it all at once." We said, "All we're looking for is compliance." Being reasonable, 33 buildings, it was taken care of. And that's what we've done throughout the town, and now we're down to where we're at, which is a small portion of the town. which is a small portion of the town. But we're, we're finally getting everyone to compliance, working with everyone and understanding the hard times that we're under. And so if you'd like to think about it, give it back into the hands of the Building Department and the Fire Department. And we will continue to work with the business community and the, our residents in it and keep it fire safe.
That's pretty easy.
Yep.
I'm good with it.
You don't got a problem with it?
I think if the Chamber and maybe Corinne could make sure businesses are aware that something this simple is available till the drop dead date. At least we've exposed that there is a possibility that they can do to protect the residents and that's the most we can do at this time. I have no problem with that. I want to make sure people realize there is a safety.
I mean, the, the cost, and Corinne helped me. Didn't you say it's just a few hundred dollars for a system like that?
Yeah.
So...
So we can leave it up to the landlords then?
So basically, what we're saying right here, right now, is we don't even need to vote on this on Monday. We just leave it alone.
That's correct.
That's it. We're done.
Where were you a half hour ago, Frank?
(laughing).
Remove it from the agenda.
Yeah, why didn't you just come up and say that?
When we do, when we do work with everyone, we want to make sure that the systems that they put in are of code. We cannot allow, just like we cannot allow a residential sprinkler system in a commercial building. We cannot allow a residential or a smoke alarm with battery operated in a commercial building or an apartment building. And, you know, there, if we're going to do it, we're doing it correctly by code. But we will make sure that, that we work, as we have been, with our business community to, when they do install it, it will be to code. There's no going back and trying to piecemeal things together. Right? And we'll handle it the right way.
So it's a consensus, we'll remove this now?
Yep.
Okay. Move her on.
There be no further comments?
I shut up a long time ago.
Next item. Engineering Services Agreement. Board to Consider Engineering Services Agreement with Christopher Burke. Engineering for Phase 1 Engineering Services on Etroby Avenue Storm Sewer Analysis Project.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to get into the whole village-wide drainage study, but as part of that process, we've developed a very, you know, good fundamental master plan for the village of Westmont. And one of the obviously well-known problem areas is the North Warwick flooding portions, both the 300 block and the 400 block. Given that it is a, kind of a regional issue, there's a lot of interrelated things, not just the topography, but the storm sewer capacities and everything like that. To get into a more unique, the study doesn't provide any construction plans or, you know, any, you know, direct solution. So within the budget, one of the many areas that we are going to approach, some we're doing in-house, and this is one that we want to continue the engineering investigation on. The engineering Phase 1 will look into both, you know, not only the, the finite aspects of the, of the topography, but it'll do a whole storm sewer analysis of the whole network in, you know, even across our village boundaries. So this will involve some intergovernmental cooperation. Not so much the investigation, but if there is some conclusion that is, you know, across the village boundaries, we would have to work together on that. As well as look at the actual, very literal watershed boundaries and see if there's any opportunities to take certain tributary waters to the problem area into a more manageable direction. So these are all aspects that we're looking for, to hire Chris Burke to do the engineering Phase 1 services for this, for this region. And at the conclusion of that, we'll have better information this fall as far as if there's any budget opportunities for next year, maybe some physical improvements.
Okay, thanks.
Comments?
Is this budgeted and where we're prepared for it financially?
Yes.
Are there any no comments?
Yes.
Thank you again, Steve. Next item. Declaration of Village Property as Surplus Order. Consider declaring certain vehicles firmly in village service as surplus village property. These items will be disposed of by auction administered by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference on September 25th, 2010. Comments? Next item. Executive... Did I hear a rumble come from the left side?
It's pretty routine. Where's the list?
Executive Session Minutes. Board to Consider Motion to Accept, Approve, and Release the Corrected Executive Session Minutes for the years listed with exceptions as noted on the following list. The following list is quite lengthy. If there are any questions regarding that list, please contact the village clerk for clarification as this is an item that she is very, very familiar with.
I was alerted to one correction and I will let her know. Thank you, trustee Klebenow.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item. IMRF Authorized Agent. Board to Consider Appointment of an Authorized Agent to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
This is the retirement fund that covers all of our non-police, sworn police officer employees. We're required by statute to have someone designated as the Authorized Agent that serves as the official processor of various forms and reports that we have to do with IMRF. And what we're asking the board to do is to change that appointment to our Human Resource Administrator. And there is a, in your packet, there is a blank resolution, I believe, that is the form that we need to use for that.
Got you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next. Finance Ordinance Number 9.
Wave the reading.
Request to wave the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders?
Just, I guess, ask a real quick question on the assault budget. How do we do on the money? Has the price come in or is it?
No, it has not been bid yet.
Has been bid? Okay. That's just their standard amount that we ask for?
It's the budgeted amount.
Yeah.
Any other questions on purchase order?
I had a question on the finance ordinance that...
I'm sorry, we've covered that already.
Thank you. You didn't ask for questions, you just waved the reading.
What is your question?
On page 18 for Mead Electric. Every, every purchase order and invoice is itemized right down to the Hewlett-Packard printers, printing cartridges that Glenn uses. Mead Electric, we've got almost $7,000 with no itemization of what any of these invoices are other than their number.
Something like the stoplights, right? I thought they just did the lights.
Page 18 of the detailed report. This is the, yeah, the regular maintenance for contract for Mead. We can probably provide greater detail.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure with, I don't have access to that report, but the, the, whatever was turned in with the purchase order would have information on there. We have maintenance agreement for traffic signal work that's fixed monies unless there's something extraordinary and then usually we cut a separate purchase order for that. Or all of our streetlight maintenance is always per call. So it could be something as simple as utility locating.
Yeah, it's, it's all here.